Make me more nervous than I am.
Apparently, he's always watching, so.
He's probably got insomnia.
They already, they already have a new municipal building. He's not going to bother to tune into this one.
Salt, a little salt.
Mm-hmm, they're good, right?
Did you make them?
No, I did not.
You could have told us that you didn't.
I could have, but, but then I have to go and, and see Father Tappy, and I don't want to do that.
Oh, that's right.
Then I have to go to confession.
Seven thirty-two. So, good evening. This is a work session of the Greenbelt City Council. My name's Emmett Jordan. I'm the mayor. And my colleagues at the table, could you introduce yourselves, please?
Kristen Weaver, Mayor Protem.
Jenny Pompey, Councilmember.
Silky Pope, Councilmember.
Danielle McKenney, Councilmember.
Amy Nissel, Councilmember.
Rodney Roberts, City Council.
All right. Hey, any information items for the end of the meeting? I've got one. Anybody else, city manager here? You got two? Okay, you know, we hold these council work sessions on Mondays and Wednesdays several times a month to exchange information with community stakeholder groups or to gather information from staff, advisory boards, or residents. No votes or formal actions are taken at work sessions. Our work sessions, as well as our meetings, are open to the public except for executive sessions as authorized by state law, so that residents and others can observe councils deliberations. We do strive to provide reasonable opportunities for the public to voice opinions on matters being considered, and we'll pause periodically for public comment. During these times, if you, if you wish to make a comment, if you raise your hand after being recognized, we ask you to go to the podium, state your name and where you live in Greenbelt or where you live in general. And if you are on Zoom, you can use the Q and A tab at the bottom of your screen to submit a question in writing, or if you raise your virtual hand, once again, we'll recognize you and promote you so that you can speak. If you are watching on cable TV or on Facebook or YouTube, you can send an email to us at questions@greenbeltmd.gov, and we'll do our best to pick up on those questions. It's sort of a lot to handle, but, you know, public participation from residents and others is very, very important to the way that Greenbelt operates, the way that we work. So, tonight, oh, and I forgot to say, you know, the remarks, if you could, three, three to five minutes, three minutes actually, and speak on one topic, because there are a lot of people here and other people might want to speak, so one topic. And we ask, as always, to avoid questioning the motives of others and in general to be civil in your remarks. We're all neighbors. So, this is a interesting work session tonight. We're actually talking about the building that we're sitting in right now, the municipal building. And we've been having discussions for a while now about the space needs here in the city of Greenbelt. This actually started off with discussions back in 2022. We're really having an acute crush for space, particularly here in the municipal building where we have Greenbelt Cares, our social service offices, our finance offices downstairs, the city manager is here, and the IT department, and literally, there, there's no space, particularly for, for cares, Greenbelt cares, to actually have private conversations with, with clients. So it's, it's a real challenge. So we started having these discussions back in 2022. And with the space study and the outcome of that was an RFP that was developed about a year, about a year ago, to, to bring in an architect to just put some really general conceptual plans before us, so we'd have an idea of what some options might be. So, we got a initial report from the architectural firm that did the study for us, and this was back in November of this year, November first. Avant URS LLC is the architectural firm. And city manager, Jose Someron, how are you doing tonight?
I'm doing great, Mayor. How are you all doing?
Pretty good, pretty good. So, we've been having these discussions actually prior to your coming to the city of Greenbelt back in September. It seems like longer than that, but it's only been.
It feels longer than that, for sure.
So, here we are, and we, we got an initial report, and council asked for some additional information to begin to just price things out in a very general sense. It's not like we're about to do anything.
Correct.
But we're just trying to get a sense of how much different options would cost. So subsequently, after, after that presentation was made, several residents got together and, and actually came up with some, sort of a thought piece, some other alternatives for us to consider. And they presented that to the advisory planning board. They presented it to the city manager, and they are here with us tonight. So, we've got David Whipple, who has been a, how long have you lived in Greenbelt, David?
Twenty-seven, almost twenty-eight years now.
Twenty-eight years, my God.
But I had a relationship even before I lived here. I, I actually graduated from Eleanor Roosevelt High School back in class of eighty-one, and I can first remember visiting the city of Greenback, Belt, probably sixty-nine, maybe, when my family first relocated to, to live in Maryland. We were over in New Carrollton, but Greenbelt was a pleasurable place to come and, and see, uh, see, well, mostly to, to go to the lake, to be honest.
Okay. And David, you're, you're an architect, aren't you?
I am. I'm a registered architect in the state of Maryland, and I've worked in firms in Prince George's County for nearly my entire career.
You actually worked in Greenbelt for a while.
I did. Yeah, I was able to persuade my office to, to move our offices to be actually right on Roosevelt Center for a number of years.
So, you and Isabel Gournier, who was a member of APB, are you a member, you're not a member of APB. Have you ever served on APB?
I have not, but you saw my little pin, you know, it's because I'm a, do something else that's similar to that. I'm on the, the Board of Appeals.
Okay. Architectural variance.
Some other issues, yeah.
Okay, so you and Isabel got together and started thinking about, you heard the presentation, and what happened?
Well, actually, what happened is because of some family issues that I was having, I had kind of dropped out of what was going on in the city of Greenbelt for a while, and then I was trying to have a reawakening of what I need to be doing to be a, a good member of my community. And I saw, oh, there's an upcoming meeting, and it was a meeting that was going to be dealing with what's going on here with the, the municipal building. And I called over to the offices here, and I was given very good directions. I wanted to compliment the people that work in this building. You have a lot of very competent people working here in this building, and, and it's, uh, they, they need to be praised for the very good work that they do. I was directed to where I could find the information I needed on the website. I was able to download that information, and I watched the work session. And as I watched that work session, there was at least two times in the work session where people from the city council asked, "Has Isabel Gournier seen this?" And as I continued to watch it, I, I tried to gather my thoughts. It was kind of lunchtime at that point when I went downstairs to get myself something to eat, and I looked out my front door, and Isabel Gournier was walking by my front door, which is not unusual. She does that at least twice a day because she goes to the pool. Yeah, I know. That's very Greenbelt. So, I stepped outside with my slippers on and said, "Isabel, have you seen this?" And she said, "What?" And that sort of was the start of this collaboration. I sent her the information that was given, and she viewed the, the work session as well, and things sort of took off from there.
So, long story short, Isabel is also an arc, she's an academic, retired, tenured faculty member from the School of Architecture over at University of Maryland.
Yes, she, she has a degree in architecture from Accul de Beaux Arts in Paris, France, which is, which is kind of like saying you went to Yale, and then she came here and she got a degree from Yale. She, she, yeah, she is an academic architect, and since, unfortunately, she's not here. This is not Isabel.
I'm not Isabel.
I, I brought this to sort of represent Isabel. This is a book that, that she wrote, and it has a lot of information in it about city planning, including a lot of information about the city of Greenbelt. I can't say that I've read the whole thing, but I, I think sort of this level of thought is kind of the level of thought that Isabel works on, so I'll leave that up there to, to represent Isabel. And I brought this to represent myself, which this is also is a very important book. This is one of my favorite books, and strangely enough, it's about a professional that spends his whole life working, and the culmination of his career is digging the foundation of the city hall.
That's right.
This is one of the childhood books that shaped my decision to want to become an architect, so.
That is Mike Mulligan and the Steam Shovel, which is a classic.
Read the book. Don't watch the movie. The movie's not that well done. If this should come out in a movie, I, I would recommend watch the movie. It's a little thick going through some of that.
Okay, so, long story short, we, we're going to, you're going to give us a presentation, and afterwards in the work session, we're actually going to get an update from, from our architect, who is going to present some of her findings, and, and then we're going to have some public comment, and that's how it's going to go.
And Kevin here, who's going to stand in for Isabel, primarily because I just can't speak as well as Isabel on lots of the things that you would see that I would be stumbling over. I'll still stumble over them, but Kevin's going to sort of fill in, in some spaces just so I can catch my breath.
Sounds good. Sounds like a plan. So, the floor is yours.
Okay. Why don't we advance to, to the first slide of the presentation? And it's simply a, a slide that sort of gives some of the credentials of who we are, which I think we've already gone over. Isabel is, is Dr. Gournier, and I'm David Whipple, Greenbelter, Registered Architect. Can move ahead to the, the next slide. Mine's upside down. Okay. Isabel and I tried to, to glean out sort of four points that we thought were crucial to what we're doing here. So, I'll read those because I think they're worth reading. "We are calling for a holistic and mindful process to select the location and define the design of the Greenbelt City Hall. Together, let us strategize how to renovate, extend, or entirely, or entirely new structure for honor, structure can honor the planning principles that shaped our city and draw from the character of our original building while serving current requirements and anticipating future needs." In short, we're saying we need a process that is looking beyond simply, we've got, we need space, we've got to build something. We need to build the right space, the right way. Selection and anticipation of a site would entail, entire, I'm going to ask Kevin to step in. Yes, please do.
Okay. Selecting an inappropriate site would, would entail irreparable damage and negatively impact the life of citizens for generations to come. I mean, that's the nature of building a new building or a major renovation. The city ought to weigh all the possible siding and design options, a process that we would like to encourage through this presentation. All, all of the options. You know, there's, we think there's options that were not covered.
Go, go ahead and continue to read through.
The Greenbelt Building is the one that already exists. Obviously, we're sitting in it right now. "Tearing down an existing structure should not be undertaken without ample consideration." That is one of the options, options on the floor, and tearing down an existing building not only is not always the most green thing to do, but it's also entails some, some issues about transferring from one building to the next, so. But regardless of the site selection, special attention ought to be given to the planning and design of the council chamber. That's another thing that Isabel was really concerned about, and that, that might be a step beyond what we should be considering today, but that is the next step.
Okay. Let's go to the next slide. Here I'm going to sort of summarize what, what Isabel is trying to present to us. Here she's showing us that sort of as long back as we want to study, when a, a town halls have been built, they've been built in the prominent location in the city. That's an important factor of what a city hall is. She selected to show us this one from the sixteen hundreds, actually in the town where, where she grew up. The important thing here is not that your city hall have a tower on it, or that it has this, this grand space in it, or that beautiful porch on it, or the fact that it's built on that plaza there, but all of those things are key to what makes a city hall important and where it is important. It needs to be recognizable. It needs to be, or wants to be, in the center of the town, ideally in the center of where, where the people are gathering. And it wants to have an interactive space so that the public can come in and out of it in a very natural way and feel comfortable within it. Let's go on to the next slide. Isabel's next selection was she decided that she wanted us to look at this building here by Douglas Ellington, who, if I were a better architect, I would have known that was the architect who designed the community center. The importance here is that seventeen years prior to that, he had designed a city hall, and in her mind, and I would agree, we should look at what he would have wanted in a city hall should he have designed a city hall here. It probably wouldn't look like this. It would not be of this scale. This is a much larger city hall than we would be calling for. But her, what she was gleaning from this was the level of detail that he put into this building, the fact that he, he thought things out to the same level that he did at the community center is what he would have done in a city hall, and that was the important element here.
One on the left, is that Asheville?
That is. That's exactly what that is. That, that's all the same building. Those are just different detail shots of it. We can go to the next slide. Okay. Next, she takes us over to England, to Fletchworth, where, if, if we're good Greenbelters, we know that that's a garden city, and Greenbelt is a garden city. And that's why she chose to show us this. Again, where's the city hall? If we look at the, at the diagram of the city layout, it's in the city center. All roads lead to city hall. And likewise, she would argue that if we're a planned city, which we are, and a planned garden city, maybe it would make sense for all roads to lead to city hall. Go ahead to the next slide. Next, she took us to some more contemporary buildings. I, I can't honestly say I'm familiar with these, but her, the importance of these are the facts that all of these buildings are plaza-based buildings. They're buildings that have a presence, and they have a space, an outdoor space that relates to them, that makes them part of the city, and it has a, a feel that the urban population can gather and join together in front of city hall and have their presence there. Go ahead to the next slide. Then she took us to one of our sister cities in Green Hill, Ohio. Here, the choice was made that they did have a, a city hall, and it was actually part of one complex that had this, the school, community building, and the city hall combined as to one. She's not necessarily suggesting that, but she thought that we should be aware of that, and we should understand that there are other ways that city halls have been built in cities that are, are the precedent of cities or equal cities to our own. Yes?
I'm wondering if you're aware that the city hall that we're sitting in now is a secure building now. People can't just come and go like they used to.
I am.
Even I gotta have a little card to get in.
Rodney, I'm very aware of that.
So, it's not like, you know?
No, but, but there can be parts of the building that can be accessible. It can have a lobby that's accessible. Our, our lobby is accessible at certain times of the day.
Actually, that makes it even more important than the architecture be inviting.
Right, and, and Kevin and I have spent a lot of our career working on buildings that want to be open, but at some point in history, that's changed. We worked on a lot of school buildings, which have that same quality. We always thought of schools as being something that the public could just flow into. There are ways to make them still have that feeling, but have a level of security, and I'm sure wherever a city hall is built, it will be, use those same design principles and elements to allow it to have public access but have security as well.
Yeah, and that building looks just a little bit like the, the original high school or the.
It does. It does have a resemblance there. I, I can't honestly say that. I believe that it is, but I can't say that for sure. Yeah, Isabel would know.
And that's just outside of Cincinnati, Ohio.
Maybe Emmett would know. Have you been there?
I have been to Green Hills. I, I can't say whether or not the building is still there, though.
But the city hall is in the center. That's another.
Let's, let's go ahead and move on to the next slide. This, this next building is one that in some ways may seem very out of place, but I think it's, it's Isabel's way as a historian to tell us that we need to look at buildings that are of the same era of the building that we're talking about to understand the history of that building. She's chosen this building because it is of the same era of the building that we're in, and it is built primarily in the same style as the building that we're in, but it would be what we would call the high style of that. Unfortunately, Greenbelt in nineteen sixty-three, what was it when this building was built? Can't remember all the dates, didn't probably have the same budget that, that this did, nor did they have Alveralto, one of the renowned architects of that, that era.
So, you know, brick and wood.
That's exactly it. That's exactly what this building was looking at. I'm, I, I would guess that the idea of brick and wood is exactly what went into this. It, this, this building wanted to be as much of a mid-century modern building as it could. It was a contemporary building built in that era, so we should look at the, the high style of that to try to determine what to do with what we have. Go ahead on to the next slide. Okay. We set some key objectives. We decided that we think you need to define the space requirements, both current and future, and figure that when you figure those out, you're going to be about fifteen to thirty percent low. Because the sad fact of the matter is, by the time you get that building built, it's going to be too small if you hadn't done that. You need to select the most suitable location, both for the functional and symbolic standpoint for this building to be in. And our last point was, you need, we need to somehow, at an early point, establish a workable timeline for planning and completion of the project. I know we've been talking about this for a while, but I'm not sure we have a good handle on, on all of these things, so we thought that it was important that we leave that out. Okay. I'm going to take a sip of water here real quick. At this point, I sort of go into, to my mode. For, for about twenty-five years of my career, I acted as Director of Design where I was working, and a large part of my job was to figure out how do things need to fit together and, and, and what needs to, what, what you need to leave in, what you need to leave out. It's not all about how to make it pretty or that. That's the fun part, but, but there are these other sort of number crunching pieces that you need to do.
Functional.
I, I, I looked through what we had as the program for this building, based on the, the studies that were done in the RFPs, and laid it out there, and I divided it into two different categories. I said, "These things are integral to a city hall, and these possibly could be somewhere else." They all could be in one building, that's true, but they don't all necessarily need to be in one building. So, this was a division we made. Go ahead on to the next slide.
This was sort of the, the space study that was done.
This was, this was based on, on the space study and, and the program that was set, and I, I have, I have some ideas about how these different programs work, partially because I've been a Greenbelter for twenty-seven years, partially because my, my wife also works in the city of Greenbelt and keeps me pretty well informed as to how these different departments work together and how they function, and partially just because I'm a curious person.
Mayor Protem.
Yeah, can, can you explain what the, the efficiency ratio is?
One would love to think, if you knew exactly how much space you needed for something, you would know exactly what you needed to build, and you would be exactly wrong. Because there are things that you forgot about. There are things like, oh, yeah, how do I get from space A to space B? How do I build, what, what falls between space A and space B? Oh, yes, that has some thickness, doesn't it? And how do I get from floor one to floor two? And where do I go when I have that urge? All of these things affect the efficiency ratio, so when you think you know how big that your building is, you're wrong. And here, I chose one, and I could be wrong here. I'm not saying this is, this was sort of a, a gut reaction. Let's go with seventy-five percent. I, I've done a number of buildings. I, I, I would be willing to, to adjust that number, but that was sort of a, a good number to start with, I felt like.
Okay, so it's basically, it's the, it's the extra wiggle room for the space you didn't think about, that you don't, the, the things you're not focusing on, like the lobby or the offices or that sort of.
That aren't programmed, correct.
And specifically stairs, elevators, hallways, wall thicknesses, closets, things like that.
Mechanical spaces, all of those things.
Right.
Thank you.
Okay, so, then I took a diagram of the building that we're in, and I said, "Well, what would happen if I took all that stuff that I think could be somewhere besides the, the city hall? Could I put them all in here?" So I put them all in here, and I said, "Yes, I can." So, I could fit the cares program, the Gales program, the IT office, and the planning department in this building, and still felt like I had enough wiggle space to, to make everything else work. So that was exercise number one. Exercise number two, we move on, was to say, "Well, what if we really don't want to tear down a perfectly good building, and we don't want to put that stuff that we don't think needs to be in the city hall, but what could we do? We couldn't think of anything at all that you could do with this building if you didn't put that, no." The fact of ours, we, we came up with a couple of quick ideas. Oh, yeah, this building could still be here if the city hall moved out and went somewhere else, and it could still be a usable building, perhaps usable by the city, or perhaps leasable by the city so that someone else that would be desirable could use this building, and then when the city decides, "Hey, guess what? We need another twenty thousand square feet. Where can we get, oh, yeah, time to terminate that lease." That was what this diagram is showing. Go ahead on to the, the next slide. Okay. This effort here was, well, what if we said, "This is the ideal location. This is where city hall would be, or should be. What if we take all of those things that don't need to be in the city hall and." What if we take all of those things that don't need to be in the City Hall and find somewhere else for them to go? Somewhere maybe more economical, somewhere maybe that we can acquire quicker space, maybe it could be leased, whatever. Just imaginary, put them somewhere else.'" So we said, "Okay, we'll do that." Then what we need to do is we need to make this the City Hall that just has in it the City Hall functions that we think need to be there. On this diagram, I was willing to get a little bit more elaborate and say, "Well, if we were to do that, we would have to really do a major gut renovation and renewal of what this building looks like. Put some pieces in it that would allow it to have some of those qualities that Isabel and I were talking about earlier, about allowing the public to be able to interact with it more easily." The big idea here was, you take the link piece that ties this older half of the building and the newer half of the building, the part that has the stair and elevator and glass lobby, we just tear that out. Throw that little piece away and re-figure that and put some other pieces that would allow that to sort of be reconfigured so that things could work differently.
And to be clear, this building was built in phases. So we're sitting in the annex part. The original part is the other, is it the other way around?
Other way around.
Other way around.
This was the original building.
Okay.
And that building was built 1977.
There's a plaque out there.
There is. Right. This building was built in, somewhere in this presentation, I've got that number plugged in there and when I get to there, we'll talk about that number if we want to. Okay. So basically, this was, could I fit the necessary pieces in here if I did some fancy footwork and restructuring and some things? Yeah, if you try hard enough, you can make anything work. So of course.
But the square footage works.
It did. The square footage works and I was able to convince myself as an experienced designer that yes, I think we could make this work. Is it the ideal solution? Maybe not, but is it a bad solution? I thought it was an acceptable solution. Okay, let's move on to the next piece. Okay. Kevin's gonna take over real soon, because I'm gonna need to take another swig of water here and my lips are getting kind of dry. But this next piece, we're talking about ideas that Isabel and I had about where else could this building be if it weren't here? And if this isn't the ideal location, what is the ideal location for this building? Originally, we had about seven or eight spaces that we had plugged in there that we looked at. We decided to, for this presentation, glean it down to these four. One being where the existing volunteer fire station is, the second one being the armory location, which we understand the city is, potentially may acquire in the near future. The third being this location, if this building were eliminated. And the fourth being a location at the far end of Roosevelt Center, beyond where the Mother and Child statue currently stands, where there's a slope piece and a green area in there. Kevin's gonna run through these next several slides with you.
Right. And keep in mind, these different locations could be one of several things. It could be where the central functions of the City Hall are located. It could be where the ancillary functions are located and Central City Hall stays here. It could be where both moved to and this space opens up. So any of those things might happen at these four places. So they've labeled them A, B, C, and D. So let's start with the next slide with A, which is the fire station site. And there's advantages to this site. It's spacious, flat, which makes things easy and inexpensive to build on and you don't have to think too much about it. It's walkable from all parts of Old Green Belt, although it's a little bit further than this central location. It's easily accessible by car and there's, again, plenty of space to put ample parking there. And it's also unaffected by existing adjacent buildings, so it's not part of the heart of Old Green Belt. So you do what you want. Disadvantages. It's remote from the Civic Center and the commercial center of Old Green Belt. So that's, you have two sides of the same coin. And it's, the site, the site and the existing structure, it may be more suitable for other city needs in the future. And an example being, maybe a new youth center goes here. So this might be a better location for other things besides the City Hall functions. So let's move on to the next slide and look at number B, the armory site. The armory site out by Green Belt Road there. Again, advantage, spacious, flat, buildable area, easy to build, large, easily accessible site by car, again, plenty of space for parking. And one advantage of this space is it may be more accessible to residents outside of Old Green Belt. So for the residents that live outside of the center of Green Belt, it's a little more... Yes?
Mr. Roberts, please go ahead.
Thank you. Why would we want to have our City Hall next to a firehouse? Because we've promised that site to our firehouse to have a new firehouse so they can better serve the community.
Absolutely.
I wouldn't want to sit in a meeting and listen to that going off all night. Fire trucks coming and going. That makes not a lot of sense to me.
Rodney, you're 100% right. And that's why we went through this exercise, to sort of show that that's the case. When we get into the cons here...
I'm surprised that you even went there to say it.
Well, the important thing is, this is somewhat of an academic exercise because you need to look at each situation and come to those conclusions.
I think it is an excellent site. I think the existing building is an excellent building for a lot of our functions. That's what I think. Yeah.
I would agree with you. If a fire station is...
Well, CARES, that would be a wonderful building.
If a fire station would be there, I would not advocate anything that would require a great deal of silence or concentration. That being said, the fire station currently is approximately across the street from my house.
So Dave is well aware of the issues. Continue. Yeah. Let me go on to the cons, and I'm gonna skip to the last con here. The site may be more suitable for other city needs, such as a firehouse. So that's number one for the con. But it's also not easily walkable from most of Old Green Belt. You know, we're looking at walkable locations and this one is not. And because of that, it's removed from other city functions, you know, like the Aquatic Center, for instance. Okay, so let's move on to the next one. We're dismissing this, Rodney sort of decided, "Nope, we're not even looking at that one at all." Okay, so now the present location. Here we are at the east end of the Community Center Green and we're looking at perhaps maybe we need to add a surge space in addition to the back of the community center. So, okay, this is easily accessible site by car, as well as being walkable within Old Green Belt. It's closer to other city functions and personnel. It would be a green solution as long as we don't pick the option where we tear this down and start over again, then it's no longer so green. We can kind of fast-track this as well because, you know, we can do, we could rapidly implement it and because, you know, simply adding a surge space in the back and it can happen It's a sustainable and cost-effective solution, ensuring a good bit of flexibility if we're here. But now let's look at the cons. The building would remain too small to anchor the east end of Green Belt Civic Green with, you know, the open space from both a visual and activity standpoint, which is supposed to complement, this green is supposed to complement the plaza at Roosevelt Center. And the green is well-defined on two sides, you know, the community center, the library. But then the other side is just, you know, and this would not be enough to, our thinking at least, is that this proposal would not be enough to anchor that side and really make a nice, you know, U-shaped green, which is well-defined green.
So this area here, basically the entrance would be facing would be a youth center or the skate park.
The piece there that you're seeing in the pink, all that, it could be either.
Fuchsia, okay.
Depending on your screen, that piece there is simply representing what we would call a piece of surge space.
Okay.
Very simply constructed rectilinear box on the end of the existing wing of the building. And it would be something that you could continually use over and over again when you fall into this dilemma. You may decide, "Okay, we have this great need for CARES. That's where CARES is gonna go right now." 10 years from now, that change may, that need may change and you could very easily gut that piece out and change it around again. That's the thinking there. There's a piece that you could easily add on to an existing building without a lot of additional infrastructure needed. You have the utilities are there, you have the circulation that is needed there, you have all of these other qualities that are there.
Parking, I do. So that's two stories or one story?
It would be multiple stories. I'm trying to remember, it's been a while since there. I think it would be at least two, yes, I think it's two stories in there. And then, but then the site drops off and the thinking was, there would be potential if you wanted to build storage that you would access from the outside, which would be very useful for the rec department for that type of storage.
Well, I found this interesting because this was, because you presented, you prepared this presentation after having seen what the architect presented about the possibilities for this building. So I guess, I was a little bit surprised by the argument that it, that it, because I thought some of those designs, some of the elements of those designs that they presented us, especially the idea of taking the side of the building toward the green and making that into more of a flat plaza that could be, that sort of was an extension of this building. I guess I, my perception of those designs was that it actually did kind of help unify this end of the green and actually made it, instead of, "Here's a parking, here's a driveway that go into the parking lot that it makes..." Oh, this is actually connected to that green. So I guess I was really surprised by some of your commentary here, saying that this space would remain too small. So is this assuming that we don't do anything to this building?
And this was based on conversation with both myself and Isabel. We both felt that in order for a building in this location to close off that green, if that was a desirable solution, it would have to be much larger than this building or the building that was presented in the feasibility study.
Okay, interesting.
That end of the site would still leak. It would have to be, it would have to be a sizable building in order to close off that green. In further discussion, both Isabel and I felt that we're not sure that it would be even desirable to close off that end of the green. We feel that that green is more like a New England green, which is a long expanse that doesn't have closure at its ends, has a very different function than a city green, like Roosevelt Center. A, an urban green, like a New England green, is something that, the way that ours is being used. When we see this one being used, children are running in it and playing. It doesn't want to be enclosed. This isn't a European square that has large buildings closing it on two, or excuse me, on three or four sides. This is driving through a New England town with the church and the green that extends for a quarter of a mile.
I get that.
Yeah, although I think... That's interesting because I think my perception of some of those designs was that it actually opened it up rather than closing it off. The idea that what closes this off is that you've got cars driving by here and going into the parking lot. And to me, that actually closes off that, this end more than having a plaza out to that space where, you know, things happen. I just, I think it's a different, I think it's just a different perception of the space. But when I saw this, I was like, "Oh, that's interesting." Because that's not the way I reacted to those other designs, which clearly you and Isabel reacted in a very different way to those designs, which is, you know, a fascinating thing about how different people's brains work.
Well, it also addresses the issue that, you know, the main entrance is facing, facing the road and no one comes in through the main entrance. So you have to do something about that.
Right, yeah. The main entrance may be that way. Yeah, instead.
Exactly. And so, yeah, that's another problem, that is another, the second con here, is that, you know, the building is ill-suited for its current configuration of what's going on, how Green Belt grew, you know, that the people don't enter off of that busy road anymore. So, yeah.
I'm not sure. It was always that way. Perhaps in the early days, people used to, the parking circulation, the road circulation was different, centerway.
I don't want to have to admit to you, Emmett, how many hours I have spent staring at diagrams of how this has progressed over the years. And some of the conclusions that I have come to aren't necessarily good conclusions. I am beginning to form some very strong thoughts about how I think it could be improved, but I think that's for a discussion later.
Let's keep rolling.
Yeah, just to stray another question, because this building wasn't built till the 60s. Where was, where were the municipal functions housed from 37 to...
I believe they were in the elementary school. I could be wrong. This is only based on my reading and I'm sure Isabel was here to answer that question.
I will have to remember to ask her at some later point, just because, yeah, that occurred to me that I don't know.
I think that civic meetings were taking place in the elementary school on non-teaching hours, was my understanding, but I could be wrong there.
I thought at the movie theater, it was used as a place for meetings in the very early days. And also, I was under the impression that there were some city offices on the second level of Roosevelt Center above where the credit union is.
That's all possible. I can't honestly say that I know the answers to those questions.
Fire department was where the pizza place is.
Correct. Yep. Yeah, that's fairly well... Correct.
Let me kick off the discussion of our favorite location, the Roosevelt Center. And let's look at the pros there. And it is, surprisingly enough, easily accessible site by car, from around back, from around by the Aquatic Center there. And however, it's walkable for all Old Green Belt residents. In fact, as we said earlier, all roads lead to here, all footpaths lead to here. They all go to Roosevelt Center, right here. And it's close to all city functions and personnel. There's ample parking around back. It would contribute to the commercial and cultural vitality of Roosevelt Center. Okay, so just the fact that people are moving in and out of City Hall, going to functions and things, it will help to revitalize the commercial viability of that space. It would provide an appropriate end to the plaza. Due to the slope, you could have four stories there without being, looking at a scale. You'd just go up three stories and down a story. And so you'd have the entrance off of the parking at that lowest level and people walking in off the plaza at the second level up. It would combine with more user-friendly and visually pleasant parking conditions below Roosevelt Center so we could, you know, make this look a little nicer back there. It would tie the Roosevelt Center with the Aquatic and Fitness Center. Yes? Mr. Roberts, please go ahead.
I hate to tell you, but I think this is your worst idea, this right here. Closing off Roosevelt Center would be horrible. Because right now, you can sit up there at the Mother and Child statue, you can look out at Brayden Field, you can see the kids playing baseball and all this kind of stuff. You put that in, you got a squared in, blocked in place. You can't see out of it. You can't see anywhere. And Green Belt was made for seeing. Green Belt was a very well-laid out, spacious place where you could see from place to place. And when you put buildings in the parking lot or in Roosevelt Center there where it doesn't belong, you block off that space. Now all you see is buildings in there. So, and not only that, but Roosevelt, I think, is one of the most historic or, you know, places that people love in Green Belt, because of the openness, I think. So to do that to it would be horrible, I think. That's the only word I can think for it. It's just horrible. It's like, no. I mean, it's something that is shoehorned in between two other buildings.
With this presentation, you know, I just want to listen to the presentation, please.
I'm very willing to listen to other people's opinion. That's exactly what we want to hear, is other people's opinion.
And I like to hear people out before I start making opinions about this and that. I like to kind of hear people out. That's my personal preference.
Opinion, and we address that. Why don't we move on to the next slide?
Okay. So we decided to do a little further analysis on this site. This slide here intends to show what most Green Belters realize is that this is, and I'm gonna get up to this point and I don't, will you be able to hear if I talk there?
You might be able to grab that microphone and the cable, I think, is long enough. Just make sure that you flip the switch so that it's on.
That works.
Yeah, it works.
Okay. We have a diagram off to the side here, which talks about why that space is such a wonderful space. And Rodney, you're exactly right. It is a space that people have been approaching forever. I'm not sure it has some of the qualities you have, particularly some of the seasons of the years that you're talking about. But it's a space that clearly, when Tugwell and the people laying out the original city of Green Belt, they knew that there's an axis that runs... they knew that there's an axis that runs from what, what now is Greenwich House, one form of housing that we have, through the row houses, townhouses, and then through the area where the apartment buildings are, underneath Crescent Road, and you pop out in Roosevelt Center. This line encompasses everything that is Greenbelt, from cradle to grave, from your apartment dweller to Greenwich House. And it ends up with your commercial district, your grocery store, your deeds. And it centered on the lifeblood of our city, which is interaction, people interacting in City Hall, which is really what City Hall is supposed to be. It's the heart of what our city is. I think depending on how the building is designed, and I don't even try to imply that we have designed this building, I think people's concerns, like Rodney's, I want to be able to look out from there. There's no reason why you have to think that you can't look out from there. Just because there's a building there, if that's the primary concern, I think a good designer will be able to take that concern into consideration and make that a possibility for that building to be. The concerns I've heard from a lot of people is, while I'm in the city, or while I'm in Roosevelt Center, I want a concert to go on. So do I. I love that concert. I want that concert to have an acoustical ability to be able to reflect off of a sounding board, which is what it needs right now, and it doesn't have. I want the mother and child statue to have a backdrop to it that is beautiful every time I look at it. That's what the appropriately designed building will give you. Let's move on to the next slide. Okay. As, as we look at the, that location right now, that's our iconic piece, the beautiful mother and child statue. Its backdrop here is a white painted brick wall that is the edge of the co-op. And what I actually think is a very beautiful sculptural stair that goes down to the side of it that you just can't quite see in that slide. The other side, if you look directly out, we get to see the mother and child statue sitting on top of a blue metal roof. Or we get to see it with, through, through the trees with the brick entrance piece. That's pretty nice to see that relationship. But as we move up to it, let's go to the next slide. And we look over the eloquently designed chain link fence that stops us from going through there so that we don't fall down the steep embankment. We, we get to see directly on center of it, this beautiful telephone pole that literally is right on center. I can't give the phone company, power company any more credit than really lining things up. They did an excellent job there. But what we really see is we see the service side of the pool and the service area going in there. We see, I believe this is a composting area currently. One of the nicer composting areas I've seen.
Horseshoe area is right back there.
There is the horseshoe area here. And, and then you can walk around there and you see the area where you're leading into Brayden Field. I think those are necessary things. I think there are things that could be done to make them a better part of our city. And I think if our City Hall were sitting right here and the one side of it were there, we would be motivated to try to clean up that area and make it an area that would flow into Brayden Field the way that would be appropriate, so that as we follow that line through, where we were going from Greenwich House to City Hall, and we get beyond City Hall, and then we flow into the next piece, which is the recreation facilities.
These are definitely some thought-provoking ideas. And, you know, this, this presentation, it's, it's opening up my imagination just to some different alternatives. And that's, that's what it takes to make a good decision to actually have good alternatives in mind. So we do need to kind of wrap this up.
Yeah, let's, let's go ahead. I think the next slides are real quick. Okay. These are just some other views of that same area, taken from places that we oftentimes don't think about, because to be honest, this has become the back alley of Greenbelt. But for the residents like myself and Isabel, who live on that side of Greenbelt, this is the shortest route to get to downtown Greenbelt. Just to walk through this parking lot. And my, my neighbor Isabel, whom I went out and met with, with my slippers on, of course was walking back. She was coming back from the pool that she goes to every day. That's a walk she takes literally every day of her life, except when she's in France instead of being here. But if we had a building in here, if we could imagine a building in there that was representative of the people of Greenbelt, we can imagine that this would be as beautiful as the other side. Go ahead to the next slide. We need to wrap this up. Okay. Here's that, there's the mother and child. You could imagine a building in there that would be a beautiful augmentation to this space and allow us to develop this side of it so that the connection between what is now the Roosevelt Center and the, the Aquatic and Fitness Center would be something that it really has wanted to be ever since the Aquatic and Fitness Center has been built there. Go ahead to the final slide. There's that beautiful stair I was talking about, which actually is so overlooked, but so beautiful in some ways. That's, that's the view that you would see from the second story of the, of a building that was located in this area. That's at the top of that stair that I was showing you. And it's, it's a beautiful building that we never get to see, because it's not available to us. Go ahead. Just, just another view of that, that same area. This is, this is actually from the pool, looking back there. This is a relationship, this is what you would see. And if you can imagine a building sitting in there, coming out perhaps as far as for the edge of that sidewalk, is or even perhaps expanding past that. That's the relationship that we're trying to develop here between the, the buildings that, that do make up the civil, civic buildings of, of Greenbelt.
Okay.
I'm going to skip over these next few. These, these are really Isabel's slides. They're, they're great slides. They talk about using slope sites. I think we're getting a little long-winded here, but there are some great precedents of slope sites and how they can be utilized in civic situations. And this gets into what a, a council chamber wants to be. And both she and I, and I think everybody reads, the council chamber wants to be a very special space. But I think it's, in some ways, goes a little bit beyond what we need to talk about here.
Okay, you know, I really want to thank you for the time that you've put into this presentation and the discussions that you and Isabel, and even Kevin have had, just, you know, presenting this to, to us. Secondarily, you presented it to the Advisory Planning Board last week or two weeks ago.
Couple of weeks ago, I think.
Couple of weeks ago. So in, in the interest of time, I know from APB is, would you like to make a couple of comments or who? You're the vice chair now?
No, I'm not, I'm now a member.
Okay, close enough. Former chair, vice chair.
Keith Chernikoff, I'm a member of APB. I live at 210 Lassner Lane. We thought, when we looked at this about two weeks ago, that it was an important, thought-provoking item to bring to council. I know some work has been done, but I think it needs to be broadened out. And this is a reflection of what the thought behind, just looking at it in a little bit more comprehensive fashion. And I happen to like the sighting as a way to get everything in this, in the center, but not necessarily impact this current site.
Keith, let me ask you a quick question. So were, were there questions to discussion with APB? What were some of the questions that came up or the thoughts?
A lot of what has come out tonight, you know, we, we looked at it as a way to get beyond the box that had been initially drawn for the consultants and just give it a broader, more Greenbelt look at what we need to do.
Appreciate that. And your last comment with the RFP, you know, contractors and consultants, very, very talented, but, you know, they do what, what is asked, so.
Correct. And that was, that was our issue, is that what the response we, we saw.
Perhaps we asked the wrong question or.
Right, we may have asked the wrong questions or not had a broad enough picture of what we were challenged with.
Appreciate that very much. And, you know, especially, I appreciate yours. How long have you been on APB?
I've been on APB, I feel like I've been there 20 years or so. Because I had, my life is on Prab before that and, you know, election board in between that.
Thank, thank you for all of your service. It's, it's pretty amazing. So what I propose to do, instead of, you know, having, asking a bunch of questions, because we do have another, we have to hear from our architect and contractor, I'd like to maybe just open it up to the, for, for comments for, I don't know, 10, 10 minutes or so, 10, 15 minutes to see what, how the public is reacting, your thoughts about the presentation, just in general. You know, and counsel, you're welcome to ask a question. But I'm just, you know, taking this in is, is some, just something to think about. And I do appreciate it very much. And that, that response, it did, did counsel, did staff ask the right questions when we put the RFP out in response to the, the space study? That's, that's sort of what we're thinking about. So Councilmember Poppy, why don't you go ahead? But then, you know, if anybody has any thoughts that they want to share, let's do that. And then we'll move on to the, the update on what, what the architect has, has done so far, because it's really creative work also. Jenny, go ahead, please.
Okay. Thank you guys so much for the effort you put into this. It's clear you just put so much effort into it. I really appreciated the, all the visuals you had, like the sightlines. That's just, that's really helpful for someone like me to sort of see what you would see from the building and looking at it from all those different angles. That was really great. So I was just wondering if you considered anywhere outside of city center, like in East Greenbelt or West Greenbelt as possible options for a building? Because I know this is sort of city center, but, you know, if, if municipal functions were elsewhere in the city, it could sort of open, it could welcome other people into process that aren't part of the process now or, or less part of the process now.
Right. We did not, but we're not saying that that shouldn't be considered. Both Isabel and I, as you could tell from the first part of our presentation, felt that center city is a location where it should be. There is precedent, historical precedent, why that is the case. I, I'm not here to argue that moving it outside of the, the original center is wrong, but I think that it's appropriate at this point, at an early point, to vet whatever locations people think need to be done. Do that process first, and then once a location is determined, then move on from there.
Okay, thank you.
Any other, Mayor Proctor?
Well, I have to say, when, when someone first, first mentioned the idea of, oh, that space behind the mother and child statue, I think my first thoughts were, there's not that much space there. How is that going to work? So I, I agree with Jenny. I appreciate having all the, the visuals and, and, because I was like, there's not enough space there. How could that even be possible? And it's, it's interesting. It's not something that would occurred, have occurred to me. So I appreciate you bringing it forward. And I think the idea of having, of, and I also really appreciate the separation between the things that need to be in the municipal building and the things that could be separated or even divided to get to Jenny's points, that maybe some of those, some of those services need to be spread out, that, you know, you only have one city council, so maybe that's centrally located. But some of the other things need to be maybe, maybe divided differently, rather than trying, I think I was thinking about, how do we build something that has enough space for everything? But again, maybe that's not the right question. So thank you. It was very thought-provoking, because I was very skeptical when I first heard the notion. And I appreciate, I, I appreciate being given something to think about.
I appreciate your skepticism, too. I, I've always appreciated skeptics.
Well, let's see. Anybody from the public, if you'd like to just make a comment or your thoughts? Mr. Shacht, please.
First, I certainly believe that whatever you decide to do ultimately should focus on making the Roosevelt Center a star, such a star that people from surrounding communities make it a destination even more so than it's a destination now. That's one thing, the ultimate place to get to. But in the meantime, I don't know if the council mayor has an adequate handle on the nature and amount of open space at night. I think the initial reaction is, well, if somebody's got to move out of this building somewhere else, then it's the mayor and council that'll stay behind. But it could be just the reverse, because you guys meet at night. And my gut tells me that there's lots of space large enough that is unused at night, that the city already has and doesn't have to spend a nickel on. And that would be a short-term solution to your space needs. Let the staff and cares and whoever else is in here Let the staff and cares and whoever else is in here that's not city government, let them have this whole building, while you guys fill up the temporary space somewhere else at night that is going entirely unused. And that'll give you a great incentive to make it temporary.
Well, thank you, thank you. Well, I think, I think with the alternatives you suggested, that, that was sort of one of the ideas that were embodied in, in a couple of your suggestions there, so. And one thing that bothered me a little bit, not about your presentation, but about just the, the traffic circulation in, in the rear parking lot there, and how that connects up to Crescent Road and to the library and whatnot. It just seems like there, there's got to be a more efficient way and a more accessible way of connecting pedestrian, bicycle and car traffic, so, so, just a couple of thoughts. Let's see, I have a, Mr. Rudd is there on, with his hand up. He got there before you. Mr. Rudd, are you there?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor and Counsel, and thank you, Mayor Brooke. I'm proceeding my hand. A number, a few things on, first, our city is looking at a projected deficit greater than any deficit it has ever had. Why we are considering funding such a program at the moment, a project? And when everybody has acknowledged, city taxes are too high for property owners, homeowners who have committed their lives forty years, fifty years, raising their families here now as kids, in the prime of their lives, when they're saving for colleges and retirement. Why this is being even considered is surprising and shocking to me. With respect, I asked the council, are you listening to the people? We just went through an overly contentious council appointment, where it appears the majority of the city voters were not listened to. And now you're coming up with this idea, knowing that the amount of financial trouble the city is facing, with increased costs and revenue, and you're going to propose doing this? Please reconsider what you think your wish lists are versus the needs and concerns of the city. And if this is going to continue further, the easiest, the best, the center part of the city to be most accessible for such a building is right where the city is located now, not spreading it out to make it inconvenient for everybody else, the middle of the city. But I hope it doesn't even come to that. Thank you.
Well, well, thank you. Thank you so much. Mr. Hartman?
Michael Hartman, Two Court Garden Way. I spent most, almost all my career at Goddard Space Site Center, where I was a disability program manager, and worked very closely with the facilities office in, when they were constructing new buildings and looking at accessibility issues and stuff. And I was very impressed with your, your thought processes on, on the space especially. But I have a question about the, you said perhaps even the four-story building for that. Does, that does present some challenges for people with mobility and parent, moving from one level to the other, from front to back. Also, the entrances are extremely important for access pathways to get into the building and then while they're in the building. Having said that, it piqued my interest a little bit about putting a building behind the mother and, and child statue, in that if you're in Roosevelt Center and looking out at, you're going to see a building behind the mother and child statue. And I'm wondering what thought processes go into that, having a, a background behind the statue that doesn't take away from the statue, that enhances it, and so it can't be very busy, and, and there's a balance between busy and boring. And the last thing was that you've got, you would have three different generations of buildings. You would have the co-op building where the church is now, you have the granite building, and then you would have this third generation. And I'm wondering about, in your design, how you would integrate those three generations with three completely different styles? Thank you.
Your, your points are very well taken, and I don't want to imply that we've taken the actual design of this building any further than what you've seen here. That's not our purpose at this point. But all, all of those are very valid concerns. All of them are real points that, that are well taken. And I think a, an architect that is worthy of designing such a building will be able to take those challenges and bring them to not just be challenges, but make them actually the essence of this building, bringing these pieces together, making the mother and child a, the appropriate focal point there, and using that space, as I'm oftentimes seeing it used, as a performance, live performance space. The important thing is that we gather all that information so that we know what is it that this building needs to do? Because until we tell the designer what it is that the building needs to do, he can't design that. Unless he's clairvoyant or, or something, but, but the more, as a designer, I found, the more information I had, the better I could build it, or design a building for you.
Hey, well, I, I'd really like to thank you for, for presenting this information to council and to the public, laying out some alternatives to the question, why are we talking about this now? We, we're talking about this now because we have to plan for the future. You know, we know, short term, that we need seven hundred, seven thousand five hundred square feet to ten thousand square feet of additional space right now. And one of the linchpins for your proposal is not just to be looking three to five years down the line, but instead, we, we have to plan for ten years from now. You know, there, there's an approved proposal for rebuilding Beltway Plaza, and that could start at any time. And of course, with the, the announcement, the FBI coming, you know, so it's not about this year. It's not about the city's financial state even four years from now. What we have to do is, we really have to look down the line ten years and envision what, what, what we can do to retain the city's past, our heritage, our legacy, and integrate that into the needs so that we can function going forward. At least, that's my opinion. So, at this point, you know, thank you so much.
I guess the other key point I wanted to make is that, you know, when, when you're building a building, like a, a city hall, a building of, of permanence and prominence, it's very important that you build it in the right location. It's not like you, you and your new bride decided to go out and get a convertible and decided nine months later, maybe that wasn't the right decision. This is a building, no matter where you put it, it's going to be there until, until this happens again.
Okay, thank you so much. Thank you. So, at this time, let's go ahead and pivot, and I'd like to invite our, our architect and the contractor from Adventurous LLC to, to come and actually, give us an update on, on the, the plans, the, the concepts that you presented before, really, really engaging, the, the reaction from council and the public was positive. But, you know, the questions about exactly what, what it might cost or what it would take to get there ultimately, was the question that was posed at this time. But just initially, what, what did you think of that presentation? Did you have any impressions?
Put us on the spot. So hello again, everyone. We met, I think, four of the council member, or three of you, maybe last time, it's four of you. Yeah, and then, half of you, yeah, relatively are new. So we were here on, I believe it was October twenty-seventh, yeah. So, we presented our initial study. We have been working, we've been tasked and contracted by the city to do this feasibility study of the renovation or redevelopment of our city municipal building. So we've been working on this since the summer, and I went through the process of analysis, programming, and generating some concept, and generating engineering narratives, and, and using all this information we developed to put together a cost estimate. So basically, that was really the goal for this feasibility study, is for us to help the city analyze all the different aspects, and then using that result of the analysis to put together baseline cost as a basis for the city to, you know, move forward, make decisions or, you know, budget. So that's what we're here for. And so, on October twenty-seventh, we presented, if you look at the slides, we presented the three middle items. The site analysis and the program of requirement update, and then the building option update. So, so today, we're back to give you an update of our work since the October twenty-seventh meeting. And then also, we are going to get to the final point, final part, which is the cost.
Appreciate that so much. And just to give some additional context, this is based off of, this is what, what we asked for in the RFP and subsequently. And you'll have to thank Assistant City Manager Tim George, has been key in sort of, just kind of moving this along so that we have tangible things to, to think about.
Yes, absolutely, absolutely.
So let's go ahead.
Yeah. We, really, we've had a great working relationship with Tim and also with Terry. Sort of the mutual support, they, they supported our work, and then we have really collaborated in a very, in a very productive way, I'd say, to this point. So all the work that we're going to present is a, the result of that collaboration between us and the city. So I want to introduce my colleague Wen Wang, and so he was, he's actually the author of a lot of these wonderful images. And he wasn't able to be here last time, so I went solo last time to present the work. So now, I'm happy to have him here.
Welcome. It's a pleasure to have you here.
Thank you.
Would you go back to the first slide? Just a sec for, so I want to also introduce our engineering consultant. Part of the, the presentation also include their work. So Delon Hampton Associate was the civil engineer, and so they did, they helped us create the site information, the data that we did our study to base on. And then GPI is our structural, mechanical, plumbing and electrical, and fire protection engineering consultant. And MA and Associate was our, is our cost estimator, who generated the, the cost estimate. All right, we can, we can move on to the next slide. So, a quick progress update. Since our meeting in, was that November first? November, yeah, okay, sorry. So then, we completed, completed the architectural and engineering design narratives using what we presented to you last time, so those building concepts. So, engineer consultant used that, those images, those diagrams and those program, that square footage requirements. And also, they came to the building, assessed the existing conditions of the building systems. So since our concept only was focusing on preserving the north wing of the building, not the older wing. The older wing was built in nineteen sixty-four, believe, and then with the north wing built in nineteen seventies. So, our option was to preserve the north wing, not the south wing, so they only assessed the, the system, existing system of the north wing. And then, using the narratives and all those design diagrams, we went into the budgetary cost estimate, and our consultant modeled the cost and came up with a range. You know, at this point, since the building is not designed, we have program, we have some ideas, so they are, it, it's only fair to come up with a range to cover the potential high and the low range of the cost, potential costs. And then we use and put all these information into the final report, which we submitted on December twentieth. And those are listed are the table of content of the final report. If you're interested, I'm sure Tim will get you a copy. All right, we can move forward. So, I want to highlight some of the findings of our engineering analysis of the existing building, these two wings. So starting, so the images on the left shows the view of this building, the nineteen sixty-four wing, and the, the view from the south way and Crescent, which is facing the Roosevelt Center. And then, the bottom view faces our civic green that we talked about last time. So basically, really now, it's the back of the building. So we, the structural analysis provided a few key information that in order to meet the program requirement, to add additional story to either of these two wings, major structural enhancement would have to be, would be required.
That's a surprise.
Yeah, not, not, truly not. So, you know, the, the age of the building, and, and what's also unique is that this building was load-bearing. All the walls in this building are load-bearing. So, you can't readily take them out to create, to, to suit, to put your new program in. So the, the structural load-bearing walls would have to be modified if they need to be, they need to be moved or be opened up. So that sort of limits the, the reconfiguration of the existing space and to fit into the new program. And then also the basement, the, the, this building, the older wing doesn't have a basement. The newer wing has a basement. And in order to utilize that basement, we talked, we heard a lot about the need for the storage functions in order to add a story on the, the north wing, that there were, there will be a lot of modifications to the foundations and footing. To, because the, the building was not built to support any additional floors on top. So that's a sort of the major structural findings. And then the mechanically-electrical-plumbing findings are, that basically the engineers are just recommending complete replacement of the system, if this building is to be renovated or added on. And as you remember, that we at, have addition proposed, and also on top of it, have other floors proposed. And in terms of fire protection, this, this wing, the old wing, does not have any fire protection system, no sprinklers. So the newer wing has partial sprinkler system. So then, a complete new, if we touch this building, we renovate this building, a whole new sprinkler system will need to be built and add and installed. So that requires, pretty much the ceiling needs to all come out. And so, it's a, it's going to be substantial renovation. So. We believe it's, it's a wood system in the, in, in that. Yeah, I wish our structural engineers here. Self-supporting trusses. I mean, this, this space obviously is, is pretty, like, use your word, self-supporting. It's, it doesn't have columns in them, but the, the other wing, probably on the top floor, also doesn't really have, I, I have. Yeah, I, yeah. The flat roof would have to come off in order to, because we can't build another floor on top of that flat roof. It, it's not built to, yeah, support another. So, before we move on to the cost estimate, we would like to just quick, quickly recap the presentation that we did last time to, for the new members, and also to really kind of show how the cost estimate was built.
Yeah, I appreciate that. I think we'd love to have.
Okay, so I would invite Wen Wang to talk about the site analysis first.
Thank you. Yeah, so this side approach, so we, I mean, everyone here knows how beautiful this city center is. And this, we know this green belt was planned in nineteen twenties as, as part of the New Deal, Green Town Program. Three got realized, including this one, it's the first. And we used this original master plan map. It's a beautiful drawing, beautiful plan. And it's, it's not a hundred percent realized like this, but majority, it's, it's followed this plan. And we can look at that, the city center area within the boundary of the Crescent Road. And I think the Roosevelt, Roosevelt Center, it's, yeah, it's, it's built like that. Somehow, it's like this. And the other half, the other center with the community center, library, that, that portion is not exactly built. It's not connected like this. This is a beautiful idea, but it's not realized in the past almost one hundred years. And then, we, we think, we, how we use this opportunity to enhance, or even real, somehow realize original idea, the principles should be kept and enhanced. And then, so how to create the center as an integrated place with all the civic functions, commercial functions, and the recreational functions in this city center? We think, it's not just a building, a bigger building to address the needs for the staff. It's more than that. It's, it's, it's for the whole city center, for the whole, the residents here, not just for the staff. So if we look at the site, look at the size of the building, the design of the building, we have to keep all these three points in mind, whatever we do next. And this is a side context we listed here. It includes the original buildings dated from nineteen thirties, like the community center, the theater from the Roosevelt Center. And then they also includes the nineteen sixties addition, the library. That's the, the modern, modernism building style. And also, we listed not just the building, but the beautiful, the crossroad, the pedestrian path on the side of the Crescent Road. It's not just functional, it's just beautiful, the landscape. And we also listed the, the mother and child plaza in the center of the Roosevelt Center. It's just everything, everything put together, it made a really nice scale, pedestrian-friendly, unique, greenbelt city center here. I remember, first visited here, Wen and then myself, we were amazed by the place. We walked around and around the neighborhood in the center. And a few weeks later, in the weekend, I brought my two young kids and my wife here to see the, the farmer's market. And from there, of course, we have to buy ice cream.
Ice cream is very good, yeah.
And we also walked the connection, the pedestrian, the trail, went to the Greenbelt Lake. Now, we walked around the lake. It's hard to find something like this nowadays. It's just so amazing, the place. Next. So the, next, a.
Bigger.
Yeah. So we are thinking how to use this opportunity for, it's a transformation opportunity. So, one hundred a year after the original concept, if we, if we are going to build something here, how to make this opportunity a time, a chance to really bring something new, some energy to this city, city center? Not just thinking about a building, the program, the layout, but how it fit in the, in the context, and how it helps the entire contact, context here. The bottom of, the right is the image of the existing building. The bottom, you can see, that's civic green. The three civic buildings, one to the left will have the, the library, then the community center in the center. To the right is the proposed location. To the right is the proposed location for the expansion of the new city hall. How balanced the space is, how it is defined if we can make this a real pedestrian-friendly space? And if you look at the, again, the, the, the site map here with all this, the civic buildings, I mean, I mean, the, the library, the community center, and to the right will have the Roosevelt Commercial Center. To the north, you have the, the skate park, you have the swimming pool. It's a multiple buildings here. Is there a way to really find, to make it more organized and balanced? It has all the function here. You need a perfect functions for the civic center here. And this building we are in here, it's in the center of this building. And how to use that as opportunity to bridge all the functions? And it's, it's an entrance image from the Southway, right? That's the, you are heading, you are looking into this building. And it's also a building to, to connect all the different functions. So do we enhance the different function, like the civic function? And then the commercial function and the recreational function surrounding, surrounding a parking, central parking space? So that's all the things, those things we have to think about.
Yeah, next. Next slide, please.
Okay, this is a zoom in view. So if, I think that's something when, when's last presentation, we already talked about. So how to use this building to, to create a real sense of place for the civic green? So you can see this is a diagram overlapping on the existing road system. Right now, of course, this building, we all know, you can park to north, south, west. I mean, it's just a, it's, this building is surrounded by all the drive hours and the parking lots. It's somehow, it's, it's not easy to, to safely go to this building, not, not only safely, but a pleasure, with pleasure, walking to the, into the building, whether from east or west. It's just not ideal. We are thinking as an idea, if we can, I just go there.
Get the.
Make sure you grab the microphone there. Yeah.
If, if we could somehow.
Yeah.
Okay, somehow close up this, we, we need to make some minor trick. So right now, the road come all the way halfway in this block, somehow half in the block. It's just not ideal. If we can simply make some trick, get, get a turn earlier, so go through this parking lot and then access the, from the center, the access of the traffic coming from the center of this, this whole city center. You come to the left, to all this community center, loading area, you can have access to all this service, all this different functions, but leave this alone. We can make it a beautiful plaza. This, we have some plaza here in the Roosevelt Center. But do we imagine a larger plaza for a larger event with more populations here? And this plaza can connect to the civic green? So this is really a space for community events, for something we cannot have now. And then we can keep this connection for fire truck, for loading.
Safety, yeah.
Yeah, we, we need to keep the connection, but it's, it's durable. We can make a beautiful paved plaza, which still can be, can serve for, for emergency connection here. And in this way, we are thinking this building somehow become a bridge connecting the, the east from the Roosevelt Center and to the west is the new civic centers, civic plaza here. Next.
Next slide, please. Next slide, please.
Okay. So that's, we're talking about the principle of the garden city. One of them is this pedestrian, pedestrian-friendly network. So we really love this connection on the side of this Crescent Road to the other side and of the neighborhood here. And right now, we can have a connection along this sidewalk here. What if the new building also is serving as a connection between the, the future, the existing commercial center and then the future potential civic center? So that's, you, you will see in the next few slides, Wen will talk about the, the program. So we are thinking this building itself can serve as a connection for the people coming, you are from the Roosevelt Commercial Center to the library, to the community center. Can we go through this building? Of course, safety is a issue, security, it's all durable. We can, we can get both, we can get a, a easy connection here. We can still keep the safety of the function inside of the building. In, in the floor plans, you will see that we have some idea for that. Basically, this is really serving as a bridge for the pedestrians, for the, for, for all the pedestrian functions for the entire city center. Actually, you can see, we did something here, the road still can, can turn here if we want access from this central vehicle accessway here. This is diagram showing how we are dealing, thinking two options for the building. Did we miss?
Back one, back one slide.
Yeah, here. So before I go to the building, I want to talk about how we are looking at the structure of the whole city center. So that's the existing beautiful civic commercial center, the Roosevelt Center. Plaza defined by the buildings, theaters. And then this actually is the potential, another center, civic center, civic plaza and green defined by the three building, library and the community center and the, the city hall here. So it can define this space if we can really resolve the safety, the pedestrian connection here. And then this is the center of the, the parking lot. And I think we can add another circle here. That's the recreational center. So these three functions can be served by this main traffic access and with the center parking lot here. And this option A, we are thinking preserve the existing north wing and build a new wing to the south. We talked about different options, do we keep the south wing or the north wing? But we figured that if we are building something new here, it makes sense to spend the money with an excellent, exciting, fresh new image for the building. You can see from the Crescent Road from the Southway rather than, you can only see from the parking lot. So that's, that's, that's one option. The next is, as Wen has already mentioned, keeping the north wing is not that really cost efficient because the structural enhancement, the flexibility of the space, it's, there's a lot of limit there. So in that case, if we do a new building here, here, we can see, if we, we also change the road pass a little bit here. So the new building serving the entire city center as a bridge, as a connection here. Next. Okay, you were talking.
Okay, so that's a, the, the, sort of the recap of the site analysis. There's a, kind of a long version of the recap. But do you want to talk about questions now or should I move on to the next part?
Well, any questions from council?
Okay.
Questions from the public? Let's go, let's go ahead and move on to the next part.
The next important piece that we have to take into consideration is the program of requirements. So the original program requirements came from the city that when we started on side of the, the project, that we were given a program requirement. And then we worked closely with the, the city team to update that, validate and update this requirement. So as you can see listing there, existing building provides twelve thousand square feet of the office space, has two stories and a partial basement. And then the new program requirement, we would not be showing the, the spreadsheet. If you need that information, it's attached as exhibit of the, to the final report. So it's the, what we went through, the exercise of actually really down to every single staff working in this building, how, how much space they currently have and how much space. So, so we kind of unified the sizes of offices rather than have everybody have different square footage. We're saying, we'll, we'll just have three different categories, you know, of offices. Large managers or office, the middle enclosed office and a workstation. So we kind of standardized the, the work standard, the workspace standard. And then using that, we came up with the net space required and then applied the circulation factor, which was talked about previously that you, you know, from the net required how much square footage you need in your office space. And then you have circulations, corridors, elevators, stairs and all the different. So add all those together, we resulted at twenty-two thousand square feet. So that represents a ten thousand square feet expansion and almost doubling the existing. So just put it in a quick visual sense, it's almost nearly doubling. And in that program of requirement, different department and different program has their own subtotals. So that we can understand each of these programs and department, the size of them and who needs to be next to whom. Which department is public facing, which means that they have citizens coming to them on a daily basis? For example, the, the planning department and the financial department. So we understood that, you know, they need to meet with, the citizen needs to do business with them. So they will be placed on the first floor. So the diagram there shows a stacking exercise of different department. So which level they should be on and who should be adjacent to what? For example, Care and Gail work together. And then so preferably, they, they fit perfectly on the third floor that we had. And at this point, I have to say that our task was, part of our task was to fit all the entire program in this building. We were not considering separating the task. And on the contrary, our task was to kind of unite some of the pieces that are floating different places and put them all together. I see a hand there, shall I?
Yes, please, Mr. Roberts.
Well, I was gonna ask you that question, are you putting everything in one building? And to me, that's, it's a problem because if you have something that happens to that building, then you got all your eggs in one basket. And I think that can be a problem, you know, what if? Stuff happens, if there's a fire or something like that, you're affecting your whole, everybody in your, in your, in the city administration. And I agree with some of my colleagues that why aren't we looking to move some of our functions around the city? Because we have some areas that are looking, that rightfully so feel left out of our community. And the only way to, I think, remedy that is to be out in the community in different places. There's no reason that we have to have everyone in one building. And back to what I said in the first place, you put all your eggs in one basket, they all might get broke at one time. And so that's, that's kind of scary to me, you know? Considering the, the kind of world that we're living in now. Unfortunately, you know, the stuff happens. And so I, I think that's, you know, something that you need to take more into consideration. The other thing is you're, you're building, you're, you have this dream of building this big beautiful building. I'm wondering where the taxpayers are gonna get the money to pay for it? That, that's what I don't see. You know, and I think by moving it around and by using, utilizing an existing building that we got up on the Southway that hopefully we're gonna get. By doing that, we can have affordable space, you know, not a big mammoth that, that, you know, we all have to have more higher taxes for. So I appreciate what you're doing, but I, I have concerns, so that, that's some of them anyway.
Thank you, thank you. But, you know, obviously, you're, you're delivering what we asked, so please continue.
So, yeah, so our, I just want to reiterate, our focus is only to study this site and this site only and to put all the program in the same building. So we're here to basically finish what we started. And so I appreciate all these other considerations. Obviously, the city has some decisions to make in terms of functional, you know, strategies and site selections.
Can I add something? Actually, it's a challenge to, it's a challenge to put all the function into this space. If the city decides can loosen that, as you said, Mr. Roberts, to balance the, the function out, that would be even better to, more helpful for this building, this side, to make it more flexible, more balanced, more well-designed, actually. That's, but that's the city's call, that's a larger study. And as, as Mr., as David also at the beginning said, so all this study, all these possible, possibilities are great consideration. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, let me, so, so next slide, please. So this is a blocking diagram that shows on each of the floors how each of these department and program fits. And the number listed there are their, not net spaces, but their spaces including circulation, how to get around from one door to another, right? So we are looking at a seventy-one hundred square feet first floor, which is later on, I will have a slide to show you how that compares with the existing footprint. And then the second floor is a little larger, so we decided to, that it would be necessary to cantileak some of the floor space from the first floor, so the second floor will be a little larger. So these programs could fit. And then third floor is a partial floor, actually. We do not need a fourth floor here. It's, we only need a partial third floor if we fit everything on this, in this building. And then we end up with a, a green roof, there are opportunities for green roof, the solar panels, roof terrace, all these design features. Okay, next, please. So this diagram compares, so the, the beige part in the middle, obviously, is our existing building. The north wing, it's noted there, and the south wing. And then the solid line, solid borderline represents the first floor, the ground floor. And the dashed line represents the upper floor, second floor and the third floor line. And they cantileave over the ground floor line. So all the programs actually fits perfectly in, in this study. And with the desired adjacency and, and their function. Next slide, please. And then, so a section cross would illustrate the, so the, there's an atrium, two-story atrium in between. That's what Wen Wang was talking about, the, sort of the, the pass-through, the, the through lobby. So you connect visually, you connect the, the east portion to the building and the, the west with the, the commercial side with the civic plaza. And the council room sits on the second floor, which is one and a half story and with planning and development underneath. And then conference and admin, I mean, finance is actually in that lower left part. And then admin at the second and then Care and Gail goes around on the, on the third floor. Everything actually fits pretty well. So this is overlaying the existing, the, the sketch lines behind is actually our existing building elevation. So you can see how the new building pretty much follows the existing building's footprint with a little bit addition on the, towards the plaza side, the, the west side.
So the atrium is almost like a public area, people kind of coming through and the conference areas provides more space for public engagement, for meetings and whatnot. And I'm just looking, so in terms of connecting the first floor to the second floor, is one elevator sort of on the council chamber side or would be on, how, how would people get up to the third, third level?
There'll be a monumental stair, obviously connecting the ground floor to the second floor. And then the elevator bank will be right next to it. And these will obviously be, it's planned now, but it needs to be designed because. because we're we're just kind of in the illustrative and diagrammatic uh stage right now. We're not really designing the building just yet. So you know, we, some major decisions need to be made before the building gets designed, right?
Standing, thank you.
Yeah.
In the in the evening, the north and the south wing can be closed out from this um atrium. So only um you come for the council event like this, you come in the evening, you can use the atrium as a pre-function. And either you choose the the elevator or the grand stair go to the second floor. So that's how we are thinking potentially for this space.
So with that, I think that's the program uh update and recap. Any questions?
Very, very good. Let's uh, Councilmember McKenney.
Um, just a couple of questions. Thank you for putting this together, too. This is actually very exciting and interesting. On a previous role that I played, I worked for a facility planning and management firm. And so I did a lot of this programming. And so I wanted to understand a little bit more. I'm assuming that what you have on page twelve is probably the summed up version of the space. But I'm wondering in your analysis, if you actually talked about like the functionality within each of these spaces for these roles? So that it's not just about, you know, admin will have this space. But in the admin space, how do they need to function appropriately within that space? And does that take into account? So not just offices, but how does it flow? How does it, how do they meet together? How do they gather? Did all of that kind of go into that?
Unfortunately, at this stage, we're not looking at like at that level yet. That that would be the conceptual design level. So uh at this point, we're just, basically, we're focusing on the sizes, the numbers, right? How big and how do we fit everything in? And then so at the end, we can come up with a cost baseline. Yeah. Good question, though. So then uh next, one would um talk, recap a little bit about the two building options in a little bit more detail, not going into the same detail that as we presented last time, but just quickly uh talk about some of the 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 design elements so we can go into the cost.
Okay, thank you.
So architecturally, we thought about two options. Option A, we mentioned, is to keep the existing north wing, as you can see from this uh massing model. The dark brown, that's the uh the north wing. And the white massing is the uh third floor space added to that. Closer, okay. Uh, I'll go there once, yeah. So the the idea for this massing model is to show um the how the the new building compare with the surrounding context buildings. So that's the uh the proposed uh city hall building. That's existing um community center from nineteen thirties. And that's the nineteen sixties building, that's a library. And that will be the uh green space in between. So and then across the road, that's the multi-story residential. You compare the massing of the buildings, they are similar in size. And then it's a, it seems like a good balanced uh um location and a mess for this building. Go to the next page. And that's the option with uh we demo the entire buildings and with a new uh well-designed uh future building. As you can see here, it's it's a uh massing level. That's the second story um uh council chamber space there. And that's facing the west. And then the the rest of them is the kind of more office function. So that's the floating two-story bars and with the uh open to the west, the green space, and also addressing the south way uh as the focal point from the south way. And at uh this corner, we can break that um massing so you can have more openness to the north, to the parking lot and to the east, that's the Roosevelt Center. So a little more study, since this, we want to make it, it's looking like a real building. So we'll have to apply some thoughts for the facade and not just a a big block. So the I, this actually is showing the the idea for the potential improvement of the site here. How we can uh adjust the road configuration, so make this a part of the plaza. Um also and serving as the um emergency connection point through this plaza. And then uh then it's connected to the green space, pedestrian walk and how um. So here we are thinking, the second story space, well, it's one and a half story. That's the potential um council chamber. So you have a very open uh west facade looking into the green space here. Imagine now we are in the meeting here, whether daytime or evening. So we open up, we can uh see out and also the pedestrians, the the citizens here can come, can see what's going on here. So it's basically, it's like a really showing um the openness for between the councils and the the neighbors, the residents here. And we can put some green space on the green roof on the top, potentially trailers for some uh more, some special event on the on the roof as well. This is option A, yeah, next slide. So this is just to show, again, it's not a uh really a design. It's just to show potentially how the building feels with the correct, with the openings, with the massing, how the scale feeling like from the uh Crescent Road here. So that's the option A uh idea. Next. Option, option B is uh it's it's showing the same idea for the, for the um uh the site configuration. So we can see this is a floating one stories, uh one and a half story space, looking into the green space and how it's become a event space connected to the green. And then um you can see the the office, we can make it really solid, the open punch windows just to uh respect the existing um existing surrounding buildings with the punch windows from nineteen thirties, but it can have some new energy into it. For this, looking towards the um, the civic green can be more open, more uh uh larger windows. And also the wind looking into the south way have some more accent point here with more glass. But the rest, the other part of this can be more uh more solid, just to address the existing um uh art deco buildings.
Next.
Next.
Can I, can I ask a question about that?
Please go ahead, Mr. Roberts.
That last one. How are you getting that all that space in between that? Are you moving that road over into the field over there?
This road?
Yeah.
This road will be, will stay here. We just, we can pave it. This is the, okay, this is the uh National Gallery Building, the east wing. Between the east and the west old building, this is the plaza.
So you're saying the, you're saying the road that's out here now is still in the same place there, right there?
Same location. It can be uh more landscaped as some, uh uh as a more featured plaza space, but you can, you can still drive through this. But it will make you slow down because the paving is different. So if we drive by here, you automatically slow down. And we can even close it during some uh Sunday event. So only the pedestrian, uh only maybe the um a handicapped people can park here, but most of the people can be, will be limited parking to the south, to the.
Is that, is that red part there that, is that brick or what?
This?
Yeah.
Yeah, this.
So you're, are people gonna park on that or what?
You can still park here, yes. We don't lose parking space, you can still park here, but maybe it's more limited for the um ADA parking space. So and for this idea, we are thinking, if it's a new building, we don't have to be tied to the, to flash with this existing building. That means the ground floor can be lowered a few feet. So really be aligned with the east and the west. Right now, you have to go steps or long ramp to come this building. In the future, if we go with this direction, we can lower that so you can uh very comfortably just just in this building. East and west connection building uh here and with the plaza in front. And then and the, this is the, we are thinking, potentially, this is the a new plaza texture. You can still have parking there, but it's part of the plaza. It has more uh both functions, basically.
Next, please.
Yeah. So that's the uh, we are talking about how the building could connect to the surrounding buildings. Like this is the um the beautiful nineteen thirties art deco building. So we have, you can have a lot of the punch windows with the similar proportion detail, somehow just connected, connecting to the existing buildings. And um that is the existing public library. Remember the roof, the angled roof, the simple massing? That can be addressed as also in the new building in terms of the color, the shape. Can can also basically make it a a coherent um um complex with connection with each other, but it still can look new because all the buildings from the original nineteen thirties to nineteen sixties, this is a evolving process. We want to stick to the principle of the the green, uh the the golden city principle, but we don't have to stick to one particular style. This is not meant to be the final design, of course, it's, that's not the purpose of this effort. Just ideas like how we re- respected the old buildings and with new fresh ideas addressing today's needs with today's uh technology.
Okay, so uh option A is retaining uh this section of the building.
The north section, yeah.
And option B is just a complete uh tear down. Yes, okay.
Sorry, we should have made that more clear, yeah.
So that's the uh, this is a view from a, from the east, from the Roosevelt Center. That's how the feeling of this facade was punch windows. And we have some openness in the corner. You can uh open to the east, to the Roosevelt Center. You can see, we we looked at the uh uh the residential building across the road. And uh that's, that's the uh, that's the theater. So all these art deco buildings, how it can be, should be connected or well thought through and when we, someone, a team is going to design this building here. That's the cost where you want to talk about it.
All right, so that's a quick recap of our uh building study concepts. Shall we move on to the cost part?
Yes, please.
Yeah, okay. So based on all, everything you've seen uh to this part, uh to this point, and also what you haven't seen are some of the engineering narratives that has really uh substantial information about what kind of mechanical system, um what kind of electrical system, what kind of the 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 services, that additional services we need to bring from the uh the uh city uh utility services and all those. Put all those together. And the cost model um has, is based on a few things. So it's a based on the uh, the uh probable construction cost data in the greater metropolitan DC area. And um also, this, these uh numbers are very time sensitive because we know the market is fluctuating so much since the pandemic, right? And then, you know, in the future, we can't predict whether it goes up every six percent every year or um stays or it actually uh start to taper down. And so we have to, at this point, to just um take a snapshot. So all these, so the uh building blocks of the this cost model is based on uh the the market, Fama value at the time the cost model was developed, which is November twenty twenty-three. So and if the um Mr. Michael Withers is here, who did this, lead, led this effort, he would say, this model needs to be updated after a month. He told me that needs to be updated after thirty days. But we'll let it go for now, we'll just look at what the study was.
Of course, with with our policies being very environmentally sensitive, uh when talking about the utilities and whatnot, we would probably want geothermal heat. We would want to look at things like that and solar and and other things that make uh the the building environmentally, as environmentally friendly as it possibly could, so.
That would be wonderful, that would be wonderful.
Something that we would, we would do.
Yeah. So um.
Did you say something?
Yeah, I said, it's easy to spend other people's money.
Thank you for adding that. Let's uh, let's move on.
And also, another uh very important uh basis is that this is, this cost model is based on that the project will be uh competitively bid, not a design build or any other. So you would uh receive competitive bids. And the takeoffs are based on, like, we talked about all the information that, you know, in different discipline, engineering, architectural diagrams and um all the information that uh site and utility study analysis. Okay, next. So here's a a high-level summary of the cost. So option A, obviously, is uh includes a the 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 a kind of brick portion of it, which is the north wing. Uh it's a five thousand square feet uh existing space. And then build around and above it and get it to uh at about fourteen thousand five hundred square feet. And it also utilize the existing twenty-five hundred square feet of basement. And um assuming that recommended all new MEP system, mechanical, electrical uh plumbing system and fire protection system. So that, that's what the costs include. And that estimated range is eleven point one million to thirteen point nine. The reason that for it to have a range is because we add twenty percent design contingency to uh to the hot, to the high. So the high recommend a twenty percent design contingency because the building has not been uh designed. And the low recommends the basically pretty baseline if there is nothing that adds to the the design. So the dollar per square foot cost is also there listed.
Number ten.
Does this include whatever, whatever demolition cost would be involved?
All inclusive, yeah. This uh, the next I will show you some of the cost components. So uh option B, the brand-new building option, that just basically a twenty-two thousand square feet brand-new building and um twenty, twelve point five million to fifteen point six million with the dollar per square foot. So that range.
The cost per square foot really is not that different. It's a little bit different.
So what we don't, if this was a two-hundred-thousand-square-feet building, then the cost per square feet will be a little lower because our building is small, we don't get the efficiency of all that repetitive, you know, space. So we still have all the uh built, the system, the building systems and all the uh the infrastructure that we need to build. And um so the next slide will give a little bit uh more detail on the um. So option A, if we can, this is a cost uh component. Option A, if you look at uh building and site, material and labor add together, it's eight point eight million dollars. And while building B, add those together, is just under ten million dollars. So you you take a little bit, about a million dollars more to to build a new building rather than keep that existing. And design and contingency, you will see why it's, you know, the next three numbers, you will see why it's not eight point eight million dollars rather than it, uh rather it is eleven point one to thirteen point nine million dollars because all those other costs needs to be considered. Design contingency itself and also the cost escalation. So at this point, we included two years in the six percent cost escalation. And then the last piece is obviously the general contractors, general conditions and cost, the uh the, their cost overhead and the profit, which represents about fifteen to sixteen uh percent, that's fairly uh standard. So add those costs together, then you get the uh, so this is, the detail shows you the high range, the thirteen point nine million dollar range. And then uh without the contingency, we can go as low as eleven point uh one million or the median price with, could be twelve point five. So that's how the cost model, if in a nutshell, is, has been built.
Well, thank you, thank you very much. Hey, I'd like to, I'm gonna ask staff, just kind of looking at these numbers and based on what we asked, how you feel or some of the uh, the thoughts uh in looking at the two contingencies, if you could just, Mr. George or Ms. Ruby or Mr. Samron, uh what's your reaction to uh, you know, the deliverable that we've gotten here and the alternatives that are on the table?
Good evening. This is, I mean, really is what we asked for. These numbers are not that different from what our design, what our space study consultant gave us initially. what our space study consultant gave us initially. What Barry gave us was really just kind of a rule of thumb at the time when he. So the space program that they worked on was what came out of the space study analysis. So they met with every one of the of the department heads and directors and staff. So the amount of square footage that we put in this program wasn't a number that, you know, that Terry and I came up with with consultants. It's actually a pretty detailed spreadsheet that the previous consultant spent a lot of time to create. So that's where it came from. Barry had said that we're probably be looking at construction costs between four hundred and fifty dollars and six, four fifty and six hundred a foot. And that was just kind of a rule of thumb, and that was, you know, a year or so ago. So really, these numbers are not surprising. The high end is a little higher than we were hoping. One of the things we did talk to to the consultants about is that we do want to make sure there's lead in here. We want green, you know, green building. We want sustainability. That's gonna push the numbers towards the top end of the range. But that is very important to us. It's important to our residents to make sure that we're green, which is why they designed the green roof on some of those plaza areas so that we really would be environmentally sustainable. Geothermal would certainly cut down greatly on long term, long term HVAC costs, but it's also a significantly more expensive proposition.
Of course, we did that with the Public Works Building close to ten, twelve years ago. So before, Mr. Samron, just, you know, in a very general sense, not even talking about this in particular or other contingencies, how how do municipalities generally go about financing large capital expenditure like a municipal building?
Well, I wish we had the cash on hand to pay for it, but we don't. But we don't, we would have to borrow, borrow money, get secure grant funding and state money. At the find multiple sources of funding. But before going deeper into it, I wanna thank the consultants for the work because not only have they met what our requirements were, they exceeded by adding additional design components into the project as it was necessary to do so in order to get to the pricing. And so we're getting more than what we expected. So thank you.
Beautiful concepts and very, very thorough. Mayor Potem.
Yeah, Tim, was, did those space needs? I'm trying to remember, was that based on, what timeframe was that based on? Was that based on just meeting our current space needs? Or did that forecast into the future, future space needs? I just don't remember what we what we we asked for in the space study.
It was a forecast. We're looking at five to seven years. Because we figured at that point, we would have an answer on the armory and the fire station and the existing fire station building. So it does, it does, it definitely has room for expansion. We're nearly doubling the space, so we do have enough room. And and that's one of the things that Barry and his team worked very hard on with all the all the department heads and the directors to make sure there was enough room for the expansion they saw over the next five to seven years.
Ms. McKenney, council member?
Just another thought, and not that I'm trying to add more to the price tag or anything like that, but I definitely agree with looking at the lead certification. But I'm also wondering if the city is looking at things like Fitwell certification, which is healthy buildings and how they function for people with special needs, just how they function well to make sure we have a well building. And so that's a different type of certification. But I think it's also important, especially if it's a building that is built for the people. So just something to think about when we're looking at overall projections and cost estimates.
Sure, that's definitely something we would look into. And if there's a next phase, if we move on with that. And one of the things that that Wendy pointed out, the reason why we've kind of leveled the flat between this building and the civic green is right now our ADA parking is not very ADA friendly. So that would allow people that needed to pull right up to that front building. Those those parking spaces would be restricted. Those would not be open parking, though it's specifically for those with a correct placard. And then they could, someone that that had mobility challenges could then walk directly into the building at grade without having to walk up a sidewalk or up a slope. So we have thought about that, and I think having a fit score would definitely be something we want to look into.
One thing that that I've seen in in talking with other municipalities around the country is with with public buildings, quite often they'll design to a lead platinum certification or Fitwell certification. They'll design there, but they won't actually go for the certification itself because that that adds expense. So it's kind of a balance there. One thing that that really sticks out for me is just the the need for us to really begin doing some sort of a traffic pedestrian circulation study. Because my my take on this is that that the our parking behind Roosevelt Center and in front of the community center, just the circulation, just really, it's not accessible to people that have mobility challenges. It's it's just not very efficient with parking. And with opening up the plaza, that sort of cuts down on the number of spaces that are available. So I I think we really need to 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 look hard at the way the traffic patterns that we have for Roosevelt Center and for the community center. Because I don't think that they are very efficient. And I think, you know, being designed, oh, I don't know, fifty, sixty years ago, it's just time to take another look and maybe consider the possibility of some big changes might work a lot better for for people and for bicycles and for everybody. Mr. Roberts?
Thank you all for for coming out and sharing this with us. But I think the I think the cost estimate is a little bit suspect. Because earlier this year, we thought we're gonna put an addition over in on the Spring Hill Lake Recreation Center, three million. Turned out five million, and then we had to scrap the, you know, we're not doing it, apparently. Thirty years ago, the staff wanted to, you know, we wanted to have a community center. And we were told we'd have this beautiful community center over here for three million dollars. You know, we're gonna renovate the whole thing, beautiful. Cost seven million dollars to renovate the building, seven million. And then, you know, there was the pool, which was twice the cost that, you know, we were told. Police station, twice the cost, we were told. So and I look at this, the drawing, you know, just the, just the kind of thought that you're putting into the building there. That's not a fifteen million dollar building. That that's double that much. And so that's what I'm scared about. I I don't have any, because, you know, I see what buildings cost people nowadays. I'm, I've been around it a long time. And so that's, you know, my concern. Because when I talk to people in the community, they say, hey, my taxes are are way too high already. Why are we not looking at different options, you know, using different buildings and stuff? So I think if we think we're gonna build a building like that for fifteen million, I think you're dreaming. That's that's what I think, yeah. Not, you know, no asking you, but.
Yeah, please, please, I really like to hear from.
If it costs you seven million to renovate a building thirty years ago, you're not building, you know, this big building for, you know, that much now.
Please.
So.
If you want to respond, please do.
I appreciate your comments, definitely, yeah, yes. So we. So I'm sure you have your basis and reasons for thinking that that what we presented should be twice as much as the cost. But all I can say is we went through the due process that have been tried and true, that we developed every piece of the puzzle that needs to go into this cost model. And we trust our cost consultant. They've been doing this, and they have a very successful track record that their cost modeling always has a very good accuracy to the true numbers. So that's why we use them. I have been working with this cost consultant for twenty, over twenty years, even before. So when I was working on much, much larger projects. So they estimated a lot of the state level projects. So we will stand by this number at this point. If you have any info information about that, you, we will be happy to bring our cost consultant to discuss this with you if you have any specifics.
I, we collectively appreciate the the work that you've been doing. And perhaps with council working together and doing our due diligence, we can actually, at some point, if the conditions are right down the road, perhaps we can accommodate the the needs of the city, the employees, the residents, well. It's not gonna happen tomorrow. It's not gonna happen next year. But it's looking down the road. So we we do have some alternatives on the table. And that's the purpose of the discussion tonight, to kind of weigh the alternatives. And to have a tangible, well thought out cost estimate on on one of the alternatives is is very helpful. We need that as we move forward and weigh the other alternatives that are on the table. Mayor Potem?
We just had, we have one comment online if you want to do, yeah.
Yeah, go ahead and read it.
Yeah, so Miriam Lewis, she actually sent a longer comment via email. She says she supports David Waples and Isabel Gordon's presentation. They are skilled architects in our community. They have a great eye, understand how to incorporate our Green Belt history and how to bring fresh creativity and modern touches. So I don't see, I don't see any other hands up, but I just wanted to.
We've got a couple of hands up in the room. Me and then Mr. Hartman and questions, comments?
I would just like to first thank you very much. These were beautiful images. It's so exciting, cost notwithstanding. One thing that I really, really loved was the passageway that you made, the pedestrian passageway. As someone who has walked endlessly from one end of the Roosevelt Center to the community center and library, it is a really tricky passage. And I really appreciate the way that you've thought about cutting off this road right here. I think that that is really something that we might look to consider, no matter what design we end up using.
Very good, very good. Mr. Hartman and other comments, thoughts from the public?
Michael Hartman, Two Court Garden Way. Again, I want to thank you for, excuse me, for the depth of detail that you went into. It's really nice to see that good work. And also, just a general comment on the the awareness of the staff of the council on two of my passions, which are environmental issues and disability issues. The questions and the and the focus that you put on them is is very, very heartening. And now with Ms. McKenney's comments about a well building, that Washington DC is full of sick buildings and is a major issue. And I'm glad that you brought that up. Thank you very much. Just one major comment on the pathways as 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 Councilwoman Nisa. I kept mispronouncing your name always, and you've never corrected me, but thank you. Anyway, the pathways are very important. But in the building itself, I'm not sure about the functionality that you, how deeply you went into functionality. But you put the CARES office and the GAIL office on the third floor. Those offices have a lot of people with disabilities and seniors. And putting them on the third floor is exactly the wrong place to put them. For emergency egress, they should be on the ground floor. Those offices should be on the ground floor in case of an emergency and helping them get out easier, faster and more safely. So thank you very much. Just, again, the functional. The functionality of the people that visit those offices, some are professional folks that come in and for permits and things of that nature. And then other people come into the municipal building for services. And so you've got two different kinds of of public that comes into the building. And that's important to distinguish between those two as well. Thank you.
Okay.
I think Tim wanted to respond.
Yeah, I think one of the reasons, and and Ms. Hartman, that's a very good point. We had to, we had to kind of weigh different factors in terms of where things went. One of the reasons why, after talking to Liz, we we decided to put CARES and GAIL on the top floor is that a lot of their clients kind of want confidentiality because it's social services and they do consulting and and clinical work. We felt like if they're gonna have a waiting area, if there's gonna have spaces where they need to hang out before their appointment, being on the third floor where there was some privacy was an important thing that we wanted to factor into into that that clientele. So hopefully, the elevators are sufficient. But I hear your point about accessibility and emergency egress. But we're also looking at the privacy concerns of the clients of of that operation.
Okay, please go ahead. But you need to, if you could go to the microphone. Welcome.
One etal, Hetchwood Drive. I have not understood why. I know that part of CARES has moved over to the previously adult daycare center in the community center. There's a lot of space down there that's not being used. And I know that they've wanted to move over there. And I know that REC was fighting that because they want it. But this has been going on for a long time, and I don't know what's going on. Like, why can't CARES move over there? They don't need to be in this building.
So, you know, it's an ongoing discussion and staff, you know, they're working it out, the city manager, and it's going back and forth. You know, the recreation department does need a lot of space in the summer. But obviously, to to me, it's obvious that CARES needs a space where their clients, they can have discussions with confidential discussions with clients and easy access. So I guess that's one of the reasons why we're talking about this. Because it seems that the push between the two departments and the other needs is just difficult to resolve without actually looking at other alternatives. That's just my opinion.
I think you said it very, very well, Mayor. The only thing I would add is that there's such a high need from our constituents for both services that prioritizing one over the other means one group of user loses over the other. And we're trying to serve all of our residents as best as we can. The current is feasibility study and the space study constantly plays that the best way to use to serve both populations is by creating new space for for CARES, a space that is suitable for all of their activities. And even this this space study doesn't really address the entirety, that all the needs of the care services. We have emergency supplies at CARES, diapers, items for for women and children. And the current office layout doesn't really, doesn't really provide for that drop in service for families and individual residents to get supplies and other things that they rely on from CARES. And that's not even touching food distribution and other services that are high volume, high intense for a short period of time.
Yeah, Mayor Potem?
Well, and I think, I mean, they do use that space a lot. But I think the other thing that's true is even if we were to choose to convert the open space that's used for events over at the community center, it's still, there still would be a cost to convert it into appropriate space for CARES. Because right now, it's big open spaces, which is what REC needs. But what CARES needs is the private offices. So it's not as if they can immediately move over there. It would still be, I don't remember what the cost was, but not insignificant cost to rebuild that space for CARES. So it's not an immediate solution for CARES either way. So I think it's the balancing of those things. And and it, I mean, if you were there, they had the art chair all weekend. It was full. It was full with people using it on 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 Sunday, and I think often is for events. So really, what it's, if we take, if we convert it to space for one group, then another group doesn't have it. So what we really need is more space somehow.
Okay, see that's.
Otherwise, we have to make choices.
That's what I understand, is I wasn't understanding that REC is already using that.
Yes, oh, very much so, very much so.
It was full on Saturday, too. I took a class there on Saturday, and there was another class happened on Saturday.
They do art classes. There was the art chair on 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 Sunday, and they were using both of the rooms up there. So it is very much being used in its current open space. Yeah, it's not empty.
All right.
No, not at all, not at all. But, you know, definite needs for space. And we're letting staff, you know, I mean, individual council members have opinions, but, you know, staff has to make those decisions.
Right, I just went over there to see somebody from CARES.
Right.
And it all looked empty and being not used to me. So that's why I was asking, because I keep hearing this, but I haven't had any explanation. So I appreciate that. But as far as the cost. But as far as the cost to renovate down there, it'd be a lot cheaper than adding a third story onto this building.
It would be, but it's not, it's not gonna be an immediate thing regardless. And I think if you went during the day, I think that's when you would probably, yeah, it probably was empty during the day during the school year.
Right.
But during the day, during the summer, when they're doing summer camps or on the weekends, then it's not empty, so.
Thank you.
Yeah.
And so, uh, before we go to, uh, Mr. Waples and wrap things up, because it's 10 o'clock, uh, I just want to, uh, to ask, you know, you know, given, uh, option A and option B, just sort of weighing them and weighing other alternatives, as far as, uh, the city, you know, if, if we were doing additional planning leading up to, uh, constructing one of these options, what would the timeline be from, uh, the approval and the financing part, but the actual construction? What timeline are you thinking, five to seven years?
You mean, uh, completing the construction or the design process?
Well, both.
Yeah, so I would say maybe two to three years from start of the design to the completion of the construction.
Seems pretty ambitious, but three years?
It, it, you know, the design process could be six months, I'd say. Would, you know, if you fast-track it, that you can, it all depends on what you're, uh-
Just tracking it, but, you know, so just, I'm just trying to get a good sense in your opinion, professional opinion.
Well, given the nature of this is a municipal building, uh, a lot of our community input is required, so it will take, let's compare it with the commercial development, I, I assume it will take a longer and then-
Obviously, that's another, uh, moving part is the, the, the process of the community engagement.
Yes, which is essential. Well, thank you so much, uh, Mr. Waples?
David Waples, Nine Forest Way, Greenbelt, Maryland. Um, I, I, I really appreciated, first of all, being able to be part of this and, and also seeing your presentation. Um, there, there were some things that, that I felt, I was hoping a little bit more on. Um, unfortunately, I'm the one individual that read through everything and, and highlighted the stuff that, that was important to me and all that. Um, when I finally did read through the, the RFP, it was that RFP that every architect always gets and it called for the same thing every RFP always calls for, which was three options. And I felt like I didn't get three options, I felt like I got one option with two variations to it. Um, a- and that's coming from somebody who's probably done somewhere between 15 and 100, um, uh, responses to, 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 uh, RFPs. Um, so I felt like I was a little ripped off there. Um, I also, and, and that being said, I, I felt like the importance there is we would have looked at different options, like what does it mean if, if CARES wasn't on the third floor, what would it mean if it were on the first floor? What would it mean? How could we make, juggle these pieces? That's really what a feasibility study is supposed to do from a designer's point of view. Um, the other thing that I was a little bit amiss was there is a lot of slope on this site. It showed up in your section and it shockingly showed up in your plaza. And it's very difficult to make a plaza function well if it's sloping as great as that plaza was going to have the slope. So that was a concern of mine. Um, I think a building on this site, this is a viable site, when, when I looked at it myself with Isabel, we said, yeah, you could put a building here, clearly you can, we've got one here now. Um, I think the appropriate building that would sit here would take into consideration the contours, the lay of the land a lot more than what I saw in what I'm gonna call option one, A and B. Um, the other thing that I would have liked to see in one of those options is what would it look like if instead of only concentrating on putting a plaza on the west side of the building, what would it have looked like if we had said, should this building actually be more anchored to Roosevelt Center and the plaza and that population and less anchored to the community center and the library? As a feasibility study, as those three options, those are the things I want to see. I want to see options.
See, he's got some opinions.
Um, so just the important part about the three options. So we do know that, uh, the RFP requires, required the three options and we did have three options at the earlier on stage, the first half of it. And then, uh, the third option actually was to keep the south wing and then, uh, build over the, the north wing, using the, the, the footprint of the north wing to do the, uh, the addition. So that option halfway in the middle, uh, range review got dropped because it didn't make much of a sense. So we decided to, uh, present, go ahead, present the first two op, these two options to the, uh, council member.
And, and as you all remember from the very beginning, you know, we, we did set some pretty strict guardrails and I understand what Mr. Waples is saying, if we had had twice the budget, we could have done a much bigger study, we could have been much more expansive. Um, we want to stay on this footprint because we did not want to engage, uh, a lot of, um, the, the wastewater, the runoff to the storm sewer, stormwater runoff. Um, uh, you know, to Mr. Roberts' point or others, we did not want to change the driveways, we didn't want to encroach on the green, uh, towards the library and the community center. We did not want to basically create an entire, if we'd moved the building, you know, 20 feet that way, we were gonna be on top of the storm sewer. Uh, and now it'd have another significant cost. Uh, we know how valuable our parking lot is, the, the Labor Day Festival is a, is a, is a huge thing for the city. Um, an option that we had thought about in designing the RFP was, do you put a building, you know, another, another addition out into the parking lot? Well, that would completely change the traffic flow, that would have huge implications both in terms of cost, design, as well as the way we use this space year-round. So we did kind of put guardrails on what we wanted them to do, 'cause at the end of the day, this is not a design study. We've talked about this a lot. Uh, this was a cost study, we wanted to know how much it was gonna cost a range per square foot to build a new building so that the council could consider if it's between $500 and $600 a foot. Um, we don't have to do the exact number of feet, we can do, we, we could build less feet, we could use other buildings as Mr. Roberts suggested, but we wanted you all to have the base understanding that if you're gonna build a new building or if you're gonna add on to these buildings, it's gonna be between, you know, $500 and $650 a foot. Um, and then the council and with resident input can then decide, is that a scope of a project that we want to pursue for, for next phase where we really get into design? In that case, we would have a lot of community input, uh, we'd have some charrettes and some work sessions on it, so we really would have a good session on what we wanted built. This was just to get to that point where we knew how much it was gonna cost. Um, 'cause until you know that, it's really kind of hard to go too much further.
So I appreciate that, uh, explanation and I really appreciate the, uh, the thought and the work that has gone into these proposals. Uh, the amount of time that you took getting to know our community, walking Roosevelt Center and walking Buddy Attic Lake and just really getting a feel for the historic significance of Green Belt and sharing your, your vision of what, uh, new municipal building, a couple of options, what it might look like very conceptually and what it might cost. So I, I'm greatly appreciative and I, the designs are really interesting, you know, the, the third level, uh, open green roof and, you know, the stairway and just the atrium being sort of a connector between Roosevelt Center and the, uh, the lawn and the library. Very, very, very thoughtful proposals, so I and, and most of council, all of councils greatly appreciative of your work, Mr. Sumner.
Thank you, mayor. I would like to add, uh, just talking about next steps, there's no decision being made tonight. I think there's very valuable information that you received from the two presentations. Uh, there are other things to consider, uh, as a city. We, we've been talking about the FBI, the armory, the fire station, so there, it's, it's clearly that we'll be expanding the campus and the city assets. So we need to think about what does that vision look like and how does this, this building fit into our overall, uh, vision for the city. So I think being sensitive to the time, I think we've had a, we've gotten two good presentations on what possibilities are for the municipal building. We would love to hear council's feedback on what other information you would need and reports or, or other work products so that we, that can inform the vision of, uh, the city's assets and how we go about, uh, designing spaces that serve our community.
And, and I think that feedback is for another time, but this, this is important information to have, is very, very helpful, very important. So thank you so much.
I want to answer, uh, David's question about the sloped side. It's a, we, we did a, we didn't have enough budget and, uh, time to build, uh, exactly following the existing one, so the one in this model is exaggerated, it's simple way. We even know that, we knew that, we are a little concerned, oh, we made it too slow. But if you go to the site, you will see it's not as the image showed.
It's about a six-foot slope.
Yes, it is.
Yeah, it's not a, it's not a straight plan.
Which is not considered a pedestrian progress slope.
We guys are gonna have to step outside and- Hey, seriously, you know, thank you for, for your beautiful, beautiful work. We greatly appreciate it. Thank you.
It is our pleasure. Uh, we love the city of Greenbells and, you know, I've studied the city of Greenbells as part of our coursework in the grad school, so it's, uh, it's an honor to be able to, um, participate in this effort. Anything we can do to support.
Yeah, it's, it's great, really, we are so excited to be able to participate, make our, um, contribution. And my background is historical preservation, so definitely this, all this site is so exciting to us and we are very sensitive to, to develop sites like that. Yeah.
Thank you so much.
Thank you so much.
And I really, I, I wish that, uh, that, uh, Ms. Gornay was here because I, I think she is so passionate about design and, uh, nomenclature and design elements. I think you, if you ever have a chance, you know, you should-
I'd love so, yes.
We would love to meet her.
We told her, we talked to her before, we would love to meet with her, yeah.
Ah, okay. Hey, we've just got a couple of information items to, to cover and so, and I, I just have a very minor one, it's really not, I'm just gonna, I'm gonna have a cup of coffee with the mayor of, uh, College Park tomorrow morning. Is there anything anybody wants me to bring up?
Maybe you can ask them how they paid for their building?
Half of it was paid for by the university. That's how they paid for their building.
Thank you.
They've got a sugar, sugar daddy here. Uh, but Josue, you've got a couple of-
I do, I do have two items and they can be as shorter as long as you want them to be. Uh, to, on this week's paper, there's gonna be news about Charleston North, uh, just for the benefit, I, I think all of council's been informed on, on the actions on this, but the public may wanna, may benefit from the information. Uh, foreclosure filings were-
Pretty important, so-
Foreclosure filings was done, uh, last week on the 31st. The foreclosure filings are to foreclose on the property, so Freddie Mac is leading that effort on behalf, on the fluctuation, is moving forward. Correct. Uh, the motions to appoint a receiver, uh, on an emergency basis were filed on Friday. Uh, as of this afternoon, as of this afternoon at 5:00, when the court's closed, I checked in on the case status. There has not been a ruling on that motion and a court date or for a hearing has not been assigned, so I hope that sometime in the next couple of days we hear about, uh, where, where in that, uh, process the court is. Uh, I saw the evidence, I think there's enough evidence for the clerk or judge to make a, a ruling on the emergency motion, but I don't get to tell the court what to do, so.
Hey, our, uh, Mr. DeLoesch from Alexander and Clevar Municipal Attorney, uh, has a very good sense of how the, the court system works. Did he, did he opine on how long it would, it might take to, to get a date, court date for the foreclosure?
We didn't, we, he hasn't, right, been, uh, we're at the mercy of the court, that mayor and I have spoken with a couple of folks about court proceedings and, um, we don't have a, a timeline on this. If the, the judge could decide to schedule a hearing and have a hearing before they weigh on the motion, um, so it could be a couple of weeks before we, we get a hearing.
How did your meeting with the residents go? I know you said that you were gonna meet with them and talk to them about next steps and how are they feeling? And I had also heard from another resident that they were considering, um, trying to file a class action with the attorney general, I didn't know if you knew anything about that.
So I attended two meetings last week with the residents on Wednesday. Uh, Wednesday was an organizing meeting that was, uh, led by Casa Maryland, the organizers at Casa Maryland. I attended that meeting, uh, briefly to provide an update on where we were with the foreclosure filing. Um, it, it went public Wednesday, the, the, the day of the meeting, so I wanted to make sure to be there and tell them in person. Uh, Saturday's meeting was the meeting to organize the complaint to be filed with the Office of the Attorney General. So there are about 30 residents there that was signing on to the complaint. Um, I know that by Friday evening, there were two complaints that had been filed through the Office of the Attorney General. The, the meeting for Saturday was to collect more, more, um, signatories or folks to sign up and, and submit their, their complaints. Uh, the mayor was in attendance. Mm-hmm. And the conversation went beyond the, the foreclosure and the, the motions to appoint a receiver. We talked about security for the building and, uh, we offer some assistance are on the city side on how we can improve safety on the property and we'll be following up on some actions.
Residents were very appreciative of, of the role the city manager and the city has played in, uh, trying to, to work with them to, to resolve this, it's, uh, safety and health of the residents is our uppermost concern.
I really appreciate that 'cause knowing a few people who live over there, I know that it's been a very stressful situation for them, so it's nice to hear that they're, that we're doing some things for them, that they're feeling supported and-
Right, right, and we try to do-
That they're moving forward with actions as well.
Right, and that's the important thing, that we have moved on actions and taken actions. Uh, this is a new territory, uh, for the city, new territory in the county. Um, I was speaking with Terry and I think in, uh, her 26 years with the city, we haven't had, and we haven't been involved in a receivership project, so, which I think it's a blessing of itself, right? We have not had properties get that bad where we had to, uh, be involved in such actions.
There's another item?
Yes, the second item is that, uh, we, we wanna schedule a meet and greet for February 12th at 6:30. Um, I, there will be an opportunity for our constituents to engage with council. We're also welcoming our new council members, so it'll be an opportunity while we're getting pictures taken and all that, folks to engage with the public. Um, so wanna, wanna bring that to council and see if, uh, we can move forward with scheduling that.
That would be at 6:00?
6:30.
6:30?
Unless you want it to be longer, we can start earlier. So that's about an hour, uh, before council meeting.
Also, we'll also do the photographs then too, is that what you're thinking?
Yes.
6:30, and, and so what would be on the menu?
Well, I, we don't have a budget for lobster, so it might be crackers and cheese.
Cheese squares? Okay.
Great idea.
Punch? That sound, I, I'm just kidding around.
I know.
I just need that Greenbelt signature punch.
Oh yeah, the green punch.
They do, there is a signature punch that-
But it's a secret, you can't-
I know.
Recipe.
I can only get it here, so. No, but that sounds like a good idea.
Okay.
Yeah.
All right, so we'll move forward with scheduling the meet and greet, 6:30 on the 12th.
Do we want to try to get us here a bit before that, to do the photos before the meet and greet starts, or you're trying to think, like, would it be better if we could get there and do photos at 6:15 and then welcome the public at 6:30?
Banita, do you have any thoughts on the picture?
I'll get pictures taken or-
Well, we have to do the group shot.
The group picture.
Okay, okay, I have an appointment that day at 4:00 PM.
We have to do a group shot.
Okay.
I don't know how long I have to wait there.
Would you be able to make it by 6:30 for the picture? Okay. Could we, could we start the meet and greet and have the picture at the last minute possible?
That kind of worked out, we did, that's what we did before, it was 6:30, it was kinda, I thought it would be tight, but, uh, the, the photographer was able to, uh, to do it somehow and he managed to get my good side in that picture too, I don't know how he did that.
And he's only gonna do one headshot, I mean, he just has to do Amy's headshot, right? And then the rest of us-
That's right.
Then just one group photo, so it should be quicker.
He just needs to set up and he seemed to be able to set up pretty quickly.
Right.
Which was, yeah. So, yeah, I think that's a great idea.
Okay.
Let's do that.
So 6:00 and we'll take the picture towards the end of the event. Is that, is that what I heard?
Okay.
But then we'll have the picture as late as possible so that-
I have to go home and get ready too, I mean, they're whatever.
Okay. Hey, thanks everybody, it's been a very, um-
Sorry, just one last informational issue. Um, we, Franklin Park, um, Management Company reached out and they wanted to know if we wanted to do a walkthrough of the community prior to the work session for council. So just, they had reached out to say, you know, if you'd like to walk through, especially with newer council members on, just to better understand the community. Um, they said they'd be happy to schedule something prior to the work session. I don't know if we can fit it in before that time, just to be able to inform our discussion. If not, we can plan for it afterwards.
I think that's a good idea, I, I, you know- I think that's a good idea, you know, I get over there pretty often, they've done a lot of renovations, so if you can, if they'd like to put a couple of times up, you know, it's kind of up to us if we want it, if we can arrange it, I think that's a nice idea.
They said Mondays were bad.
Mondays are bad.
But other than that, I'm not sure what, because I think there was also discussion of especially for the newest council members, doing some other tours and things around city facilities as well, so I don't know.
I think we're getting closer to a date on that, the 15th, the 15th, right? 15th of February, so. So I look forward to hearing some options for Franklin Park tour?
I will reach back out.
Okay.
Try to get a sense from people who are interested.
Okay. Hey, thanks everybody and we'll be back on Wednesday. We've got an interview for advisory boards at 7 o'clock and then we'll be talking ARPA funding. ARPA. Yeah, exciting stuff. Have a good evening.